Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very supportive of this project and what we're doing. I was a bit surprised that the library was not included as one of the five.
I don't have an answer for you tonight, but I will get that answer for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
What I could add, Councilmember Middleton, is what we are preparing for council is, short of the full renovation of the library, there's several of the infrastructure items that need to come forward, and the roof is one of them.
Okay. Do we, any other discussion? Okay, do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve made by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Holstage. This motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you. Next item is item one. I, approval of a request for early construction start times Monday through Friday for construction activities for the fire station number four remodel and expansion, city project number fifteen dash twenty-five. Councilmember Middleton.
Yes, I want to preface my remarks by saying I'm extremely supportive of these early starts in the summer. My background in workers' compensation teaches me how incredibly important it is that work take place in times when the temperatures are much lower than they are in the afternoon in the Coachella Valley. We are, though, calling for a 3:00 AM start on this project, and I note that the neighborhood organizations were contacted, but there's no indication as to what the response was from the neighborhood organizations. And given that we are beginning as early as 3:00 AM, I think it would be extremely important to know that the neighborhood organizations understand and are aware of the start times.
We will reach out to the neighborhood organizations before the early start times occur and ensure they're made aware of it. And again, there is going to be monitoring of the noise levels. If we receive any complaints, we will address it with the contractor and make modifications.
If there is any way we can turn off those
Backup alarms.
... backup sounds, I think everyone would be appreciative. I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just, I also had similar concerns that we hadn't notified sufficient neighbors to this project, and so I was wondering why we only notified or were only requiring to notify residents within 200 feet as opposed to 500 feet, or if there's a construction reason that further houses won't be affected by the noise, or is that the typical distance? We have to recuse if it's within 500 feet, and I'm always surprised how few 500 feet actually is, and so I can imagine that people further than this would still want to be notified that there might be early noise and construction.
The 500-foot radius was a standard, but we'll, again, we will be sensitive to any complaints we receive outside that radius. In addition, we expect that when we reach out to the neighborhoods, the neighborhood organizations, that's going to encompass more than just that 500-foot radius circle.
And if I, thank you, and if I could just make a comment to my fellow council and staff, I want to be careful that we're not overly relying on the neighborhood organizations for the notification, because the 1PS and the neighborhood organizations are excellent, they don't reach all residents, and not all residents are involved in those, and so I want to make sure that we're notifying as many people as we can, and maybe larger radius next time than 200, so that we can actually do our due diligence and notify neighbors and be good neighbors when we do these types of projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors?
Thank you. So just make sure I understand this. Did we already, did we send notices prior to this meeting to people within 200 or 500 radius?
In the 500-foot radius, yes. They, we did send notices, and we have not received any, anything back.
Okay, so we, we sent notices. When did we send the notices?
I'll have to check with the engineer and the contractor.
Okay, but, yeah, I'm just trying to find out when we sent what. Right. I said, it says we will notify residents within 200, but it doesn't say we notified anyone other than the neighborhood organizations. So I'll feel a lot better if we actually sent notices, because that's what we've asked and we've done with the ANDIs and every other project.
We will ensure that that occurs.
Well, let's find out if it did, because if it didn't, and they didn't know they had, could come here and talk to us about it, I'm not very comfortable.
As I understand it, the notices were sent to the residents within the 250, within the 500-foot radius, or 500-foot radius circle. The neighborhood organizations, we have not reached out to yet. That's part of the, that's what's going to be ongoing.
Okay. So if we actually did send it out to people within 500 feet, it's not in the staff report? So that's why I'm concerned. Or I missed it. All I see is that in the future, we will. We have a map that shows us the 500 feet, and clearly, those people want to know if there's loud noise at 3:00 in the morning, and have the right to talk to us before we vote on this. And I do understand the reasons to do it as well. People working in this heat is really a problem.
What we'll do is, we're gonna, we're gonna send the notice out to a large, we normally, larger than we have to. We will send it out beyond the 500 feet. We'll get it to the neighborhoods, and if we have, depending upon that feedback, we will report back to council. But we will make sure that that's sent out before it begins.
Yeah, and I, and I actually think the 500 feet is a good radius, looking at the map, to all the addresses. So if you're a renter, you find out as well.
Yes.
So if that's what we're doing, or we do it now, and make sure they have enough notice before it starts, with a number where they could call if they're objecting to it, and if we can be informed of that, that would be appreciated.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other comment? I have one, one question, one comment. Back on, on item one I, and this refers to something Councilmember Middleton said, it says in there when it's talking about, that's also the item where they were going to start early in the morning for the fire station. It says, "To minimize noise levels, the developer will operate backup alarms on equipment at the minimum allowable decibel levels and restrict the use of radios." Even if it's, I mean, I would hope that all development projects, because, you know, I think we all get complaints about all the development projects from neighbors about those annoying backup alarms, which I know people, it's a law, but they have to, but I think this item of having everybody keep them at the minimum is probably a good idea if we could do that.
Duly noted.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Protem Roberts? This motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, then next item is one M. Approval of a request for early construction start times Monday through Friday for construction activities for the Indigio, Indigo Auto Group Development Project from July 1, 2018 through August 31, 2018. Councilmember Middleton?
This is gonna be a recurring theme. 6:00 AM is certainly much, is different than 3:00 AM. My concern was that, and I want to thank the Indigo Auto Group for reaching out to the two managers of the mobile home parks, but as we've said in the past, on public notices, we want notices going out to all residents, not just simply to property owners, and I appreciate that the managers have reached out to, to the residents, but I believe it's important going forward that when we have these types of notices, that the notice goes out to renters and property owners equally without distinction. And I do support the 6:00 AM start.
Councilmember Holstage?
I have the exact same comment. Thank you for building. We're so excited to have you. I agree, 6:00 AM makes a lot of sense, of course, for your construction and for your workers. My comment was that I've worked with a lot of mobile home tenants as well as managers, and I have no specific knowledge about these ones, but giving notice to the managers doesn't mean that we're giving notice to the, to the residents, and so I want to make sure that we notice the residents as well, because they're the ones who live there. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would suggest, you know, understand that notice is, is an important issue. I think what we'll just do as a practice going forward is, on staff report, there'll be a section for public noticing. That way, everyone will have a sense of what we've done here, and then we can proceed at that level of notice. So, to all my staff listening, okay, we'll, we'll follow up on that. Thank you.
Okay, motion to approve is made by Councilmember Coors and seconded by Councilmember Holstage. This motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is our public hearing. Starting our first public hearings, item one A is renewal of the Palm Springs Small Hotel Tourism Business Improvement District proposed resolution confirming the report of the Palm Springs Small Hotel Tourism Business Improvements District Advisory Board levying the fiscal year 2018/19 assessment and conduct the protest proceedings to the district. Staff report, please. I'm sorry, I thought I meant to say two A. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you know, previously, we've instituted the T-Bid, which was for the, the small hotels in terms of the marketing. This was an initiative that they had brought forward. We're required to do an annual renewal, and that's what this public hearing is. And I understand Michael Green from the organizations representing small hotels will be doing the presentation for the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Reddy. Do we have any questions of staff before we open to public comment, comments? Okay. Okay, we have opened the floor for public comment. Who's the applicant, Dr. Reddy? Do we have any?
Michael Green.
Okay.
He's gonna make the presentation on behalf of the small hotels.
Okay, you have five minutes, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor and council and staff, David. The small hotels about three years ago got together and wanted to kind of participate in our own success, and so we worked with Jamie from the Convention Center to create Tourism Business Improvement District. This is the second renewal of that. You have a presentation in your pack about what we've done. I wanted to direct your attention to the last two pages, which are the most important pages. Since we launched our website, we've had a total of 49,219 visits. Total of 1,045 people have hit the book now button to go to one of our hotels description pages to make a booking, and we've had 5,074 people hit the visit hotel site button to go to the small hotel, each small hotel's website to book with them. We estimate the potential revenue in that as $415,378 above and beyond what we've had before. The last page is a result of TOT increase, and this goes from July through December. You see that we were able to achieve an average of over 18.3% increase in TOT for hotels 49 rooms and under. We're really thrilled with that result, especially because it's helping us in our shoulder season. So we appreciate your support in helping us help ourselves, and we would ask you to renew our T-Bid. Thank you, and if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. Now, we'll have public speakers. We have one request to speak, is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Our speaker is Mr. Mark Hunter. You will have two minutes.
Thank you, council. I won't take this full two minutes. I just wanted to express my support of this measure. It's been a very valuable asset to the community. I serve on the Gade Tourism Board as well as the T-Bid Committee, and I've seen a lot of success coming out of this project, and I think it's a very good one to continue forward.
Thank you very much. City Clerk, no other speakers. Seeing none, we will close the public hearings. Questions to staff, Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, you're up. Just two quick things. I'm a liaison to this organization, and I just want to say how amazing the work they're doing is, and the committed board members who volunteer their time to do this, and working with our Bureau of Tourism, and Jamie from the Convention Center, really are doing a terrific job. And I want the public to know that this is all their money. They're assessed. It is not city-funded. We provide back office services, but they actually reimburse the city for this. So this is all their work, which ends up bringing in more TOT for the city and helps, really, give our small hotels some advertising effort that they couldn't do on their own. So with that, can you just share with the public and everyone watching, the website people can go to to see the great work that you're doing?
Sure, it's AuthenticPalmSprings.com.
AuthenticPalmSprings.com. Thank you, Michael, and thanks for your work.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Anyone else? Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor? If I could just announce-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. This is a unique one. I have to, do we have any public-
So I just want to announce that the cities receive no written or oral protest against this assessment, and the council can proceed with the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve made by Mayor Protem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Coors? This motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearing, item number two B. Public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the creation of a city council district-based electoral system pursuant to recommendation. Staff report, please.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, this is a presentation on the, a public hearing to receive input from the community regarding the creation of council districts. The council adopted a resolution on April 19th declaring its intent to transition from at-large to district-based elections. We have a consultant, Dr. Justin Levitt from National Demographics Corporation, who will be giving you a presentation on the process.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, members of the public who are here tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, and for those of you who have seen before, last night at Desert Healthcare District, it's a pleasure to see you again, because what we're talking about here tonight is something that a lot of cities throughout the state of California have been encouraged to look at, as a result of a law passed back in 2002 called the California Voting Rights Act. As a result of the California Voting Rights Act, over, basically, I think it's now up to 90 cities have switched from at-large elections to district-based elections. And what we mean by that is it's changing the mechanism by which we elect a council. At-large elections that the city currently uses, basically, the entire city is one whole unit. Council members can live anywhere within the city, and voters vote on all five members of the council. What the California Voting Rights Act encourages cities to look into doing is to switch to this form of election called by-district elections. It's a form of election we're familiar with because it's what we use to elect members to Congress, the State Assembly, County Board of Supervisors, school district. You may have heard neighboring city Cathedral City had it in their city charter that they would look into switching to district-by-district elections when they reach the population of 50,000. And the reason why by-district election is often looked at is because it really helps serve underserved, underrepresented communities, because what you do is you divide the city into five equally sized districts, and so representation has to come from all parts of the city, or, you know, in some cases, the county or state. You can't have all your representatives live in one neighborhood or one community, but rather, they have to represent the diversity throughout the community. Now, what we're looking at here, and part of the question that we're going to be looking at throughout the process, is whether this by-district election system will consist of a council elected of five members from five districts, or a four-plus-one system, where we have four districts plus a mayor elected district-wide. There's strengths and weaknesses of both, which I'm happy to discuss in further later if you've got any more questions about that. We also wanted to briefly touch on why five and not seven, specifically because the charter requires, at this point, five seats on the council.
Mr. Mayor, may I interject just for a moment? We're focused this evening on defining what the districts are and how they look, and really, the nature of the process. There's a very, I think, very clearly defined and well-thought-out process. We have a subcommittee, as you know, on, on this issue. Just in the sake of making sure that we use our time efficiently, because there's such an elaborate process here over the course of many months, we're gonna focus tonight in terms of discussion on the districts themselves, how many of them there will be, and what the nature of those districts will be, where the lines will be drawn. There's a lot of time dedicated to those topics, but we really want to narrowly focus on the districts themselves this evening. Otherwise, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of get adrift, and the, and the process developed, I think, by the subcommittee isn't going to have the opportunity to be implemented. That's my, my sole purpose in interjecting is so that our consultant understands and the public understands when they rise to speak and share their thoughts and give assistance to the council. It's a narrow focus for tonight's public hearing. The consultant's right, those are big issues, but we have them planned for consideration on specific dates down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Colkin.
Thank you. And, you know, and like I said, this is our first night really discussing it, however, the council at the last city council meeting crammed up with a statement of principles that are trying to define... Sure. I, sure, I'll speak closer to the mic. Okay. Yeah. At its, at its May 8, 2016 city council meeting, the council adopted a statement of principles that we're going to use to help us define and go through the process. And the goals are, as we see here, to maximize the goals of the CVRA, including civil rights, equality, and inclusion, prioritize the creation of majority and minority districts to the extent possible, to the extent practical, keep organized neighborhoods intact, and maintain the principle that the best interest of the city remains the first responsibility of all elected officials. You're gonna see, this list is very similar to our list of criteria that we have to consider when drawing districts in any jurisdiction, but it's good that, you know, we're kind of all on the same page when we get started in terms of the goals of the process. Now, as we meant, as we just mentioned, we have a very extensive process, and I'm gonna turn it over to the city clerk for a second to discuss this, the timeline.
So, Honorable Mayor and City Council, the the community has no lack of ability to participate in these processes. The subcommittee has devised to break this up into three kind of chunks, which is phase one, which is the process and communities of interest. So we'll be reviewing the demographic, the demographics of the city, seeking input from the community regarding the potential communities of interest that the city council will provide direction on, and then demonstrate the district map drawing tools. And so our first meeting is tonight, and then that will be followed by a public hearing on July 11th at 6:00 PM at a normal regular city council meeting. In addition, we'll be holding three community engagement forums. The first is on Monday, July 9th at 6:00 o'clock, which is gonna focus on business groups as well as residents in the central part of the city, but of course, anybody's welcome to attend any of these meetings, and that's gonna be at the Convention Center. On Tuesday, July 10th at 6:30, we'll be at James O'Jesse Desert Highland Unity Center, which will focus on communities in the northern part of the city. In addition, we'll be holding a meeting for 1PS at the City Yard on July 12th at 8:00 AM, and then our third regular community engagement meeting's going to be on Thursday, July 12th at 6:00 at the Community Center focusing on communities in the southern part of the city. Beginning in July, mid-July through September, we'll be inviting the community to utilize the public participation kits, as well as a online interactive mapping system that will assist them in preparing their own maps for the city's consideration, and those will be expected to be due in mid-September.
If I could just jump in, at each of those community engagement forums, we will preview all the tools, we will show you how to use them. We can even, if we have time, we'll even work one-on-one with you in helping you to get started.
Next. So then in phase two, we'll be discussing the form of government and election year. So on September 26th at a regular city council, or, I'm sorry, at a special city council meeting, which will be focused on CVRA only, will be a, we have a working group, a community working group, that is formulating recommendations related to these topics. At that time, there will be a study session in which that group presents its recommendations to the city council. Then at a subsequent special meeting on October 4th at 6:00 PM, the city council will discuss those recommendations and then provide direction regarding the preferred governance structure. And that would be, again, the difference between either five council seats with a rotating mayor, or four district council members and a at-large mayor. Next. And then the third phase is defining districts and the mapping process. And so on October 16th, there will be another special meeting in which the city council will narrow the, the maps that have been proposed, and hopefully, we will walk out with five to six preferred maps. And then on November 15th, there'll be another special meeting in which the city council will be asked to narrow those maps down to a preferred two to three and make any modifications as necessary. And then another formal public hearing on Thursday, November 29th, which will be a special meeting focused on CVRA, which will allow for the city council to narrow those two to three maps to a preferred map, and then make any final modifications as necessary, followed by a fourth public hearing on December 5th, in which council will need to adopt the final map and introduce the ordinance, and no changes to the map can occur at that meeting. And then on December 19th, the city council will adopt the ordinance. There's always the possibility that more additional community engagement forums might be scheduled in between as those maps are being presented, and this, this schedule does reflect some of the proposals that the subcommittee has made as far as scheduling special meetings, and I'm sure you'll discuss that later on in this presentation.
Okay, thank you. And so, and so to kind of jumpstart the process, what do we have to think about when drawing districts or when drawing, drawing electoral boundaries? Well, fortunately, we're guided by some Supreme Court decisions and by state law. And so on the left-hand column under federal laws, these are things that the courts tell us we must do. The top one is equal population. Districts have to have more or less the same number of total people counted on April 1st, 2010, I mean, 2010 census, in each of the, each of the four or five districts. And this is to make sure that it includes everybody, not just voters, not just people who are eligible to vote, but everybody is included. Children, non-citizens counted in the census, you know, everyone counted as part of that census. Population count is included. And the difference is 10% between the largest and smallest. That's the maximum we can have. So that's the boundaries that the courts give us, a 10% difference between the largest population and smallest population. In addition, we have to consider the Federal Voting Rights Act. This gets right into underrepresented groups, groups that have historically faced discrimination or barriers or difficulties in registering to vote. While the courts have said that race cannot be the only factor that justifies the creation of a district, it must be one of many factors that we take into account when looking at the demographics of the city, and we'll see some maps of neighborhoods, and particularly, it asks us to avoid vote dilution, to not divide a community of color that exists within the city. In addition, on the right-hand column, we see the traditional criteria. These are things that we can do. We have to balance them out, because sometimes your natural geography may make it difficult to create the most compact district possible. It may prevent us from getting every single community together, because some communities are gonna be very large, others communities are gonna be very small. Some communities are gonna follow census blocks very well, other communities are not going to follow the census block boundaries, and we do have to use census geography throughout the process. That's what, that's what the most accurate counts according to the courts come from. And so I'll talk about that as I show you some of the different maps here in a second. Before we do that, I just want to take a second to kind of get us thinking about this communities of interest measure, because this is the most important one, and it's also the least well-defined. The courts have said that communities of interest are anything that brings a neighborhood together or brings a community of people together. And in every city or every place that I've gone, there have been different issues. Some common ones are parks, as you were talking about with traffic and noise concerns. Those are often issues that bring communities together. Here, I know we have neighborhood associations in the 1PS group, and we're gonna be taking a look at that map here as well, but also, the areas that are not represented in those neighborhood groups also have communities of interest. And in many cases, there might be places where a group of neighborhood associations or a group of communities might actually share common interests around particular development projects, the schools their children attend, the, you know, way that they back up against the mountains, or they have a share of canyon in common, or, and I'm just throwing out ideas here, because this is why we're doing this public hearing process. We need you, as members of the community, to tell us what your communities of interest are. You know, we'll show you some of the basic demographics, but that's no substitute from actually hearing it from the people who live in a place. So just to give us-
If I could interject real fast. So I do want to let the council and the community know that we do have on our website, psdistress.com, both an English and Spanish memo, which tries to define what communities of interest are, and it gives some of the examples and kind of breaks that down into kind of breaks that down into easy-to-digest information. So, we do have them in the chambers as well, as well as online for the community.
And so, just to kind of build on that, in addition, we have a number of, we have a lot of data we've gathered from the census that is often comes up in this discussion. For example, we've taken information about renters versus owners, about places where we have children at home versus neighborhoods where we don't have children at home or as many children at home, or where we find retirement communities, where we find, where we find mobile home parks, or other sorts of communities like, that have really, or gated communities or other sorts of very cohesive neighborhoods, that it would be very difficult to divide in any way. And we get a lot of this data from the census, and I'm just showing you here some of the overview of what we can get from the census.
Sorry, if I may, can you all read this on here, or is there a way that we can put it? You've passed around copies, good.
We do have it in the presentation, and we have it as available as a separate sheet we can provide as well.
Thank you, it looks like everyone has copies. For people looking at home, I believe they can see it. I was just wondering if we wanted to put it larger, but it looks like it's okay. Thank you.
We do have it in the presentation on page eleven. It also gives us an idea of what the total population is. The city's total population in April first, 2010 was forty-four thousand five hundred fifty-two.
May I interrupt you for one second? If staff could put it on the overhead reader, I don't think anyone can read this at home. I, I can't even read it on a giant screen over here. But if we could blow up those statistics, I think the community would appreciate seeing them. Thanks, Anthony.
So, that total population of forty-four thousand five hundred fifty-two, that's the number we have to divide by four or divide by five to get the number of people that will be in each area. So, around eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-eight for each of four districts, or eight thousand nine hundred and ten for each of five. And I know those are going to be very specific, those are very specific numbers that you won't remember. We have them written down in the PowerPoint that we have here tonight and we have on the website, and so, you can refer to, you can refer to that. And that number's going to appear on all the materials that we provide throughout the process. And like I said, like you can see here, in addition to that total population count, we also have a lot of other information in here. For example, this, these are summaries for the entire city. We also have these broken down by census tracts and census block groups, so for smaller regions of the city. And so, for example, if I could flip back to the PowerPoint presentation, I'll show you a map, or if we could flip to the next page. I'll show you. Sure, okay. So, go back to the last page. So, VAP is voting age population. So, the CVAP that you'll see on this map, Latino CVAP, that stands for citizen voting age population. This is what the courts call eligible voters. It's a census count from the 2010 census. It's self-reported. So, it's that old long form of the census that asks you what your occupation is and how many toilets you have in your house, and how many, you know, how, when was your house built? That old long form was replaced by the American Community Survey. They send it out to about a million households a year. This data comes from that survey. Self-reported citizenship status, self-reported Latino origin or Hispanic origin. This is what the courts use for making Voting Rights Act determinations. And so, we see that CVAP, citizen voting age population, for the Latino population, and what we have is a color theme, wherein the areas in purple have a lower percentage, under twenty-five percent Latino, and areas in green, for example, up on top, or in the yellow and pink areas that we see kind of right around the airport, we, we see that that's a majority, sixty, seventy-five percent Latino. And so, we see that there are two distinct neighborhoods that come up when we look at this, right around the airport and right in the North Desert Highland Gateway neighborhood. Now, Latinos as a whole make up just sixteen percent of eligible voters in Palm Springs. So, that's why we're not seeing a ton of red, we're not seeing a ton of yellow, because in most, in most blocks, the percentage of Latino eligible voters who are Latino is under ten percent. But we can also look at this if we, for the Asian-American and African-American populations. Each group makes up about five percent of eligible voters in Palm Springs. Asian-Americans are concentrated just south of the airport, and African-Americans are concentrated in the Desert Highland Gateway neighborhood, the north end of the city. And so, these would be communities that we would suggest not dividing or not diluting the vote of those communities in those neighborhoods. And these are just what the census reports. And I say that all the time because oftentimes, we hear stories about things that the census fails to capture. And let us know what those are, because you, as I said, you know your community had, how it's changed even just in the past eight years since the last census was taken. And so, we can really incorporate that new information or information we get about or from residents of the city into the maps, into our, you know, into what makes sense to put different communities or neighborhoods together in the same city council district. In addition, we are looking at the One PS neighborhood associations. Now, interestingly, one of the issues that we're going to be talking about a lot as we get into the details later on, they don't follow census block boundaries very well, some of them, because census blocks tend to follow streets. Neighborhoods tend to follow property lines, so people on one side of the street versus people on the other side of the street. So, we're going to be working on this, we're going to be working on digitizing this and trying to get some good estimates for you on what, how many people live in each of these neighborhoods according to those census counts. But, for example, the two Arabic communities share a single census block. Almost the entire entirety of both communities are in one single census block. And so, we'll be talking about this, it comes up a few times in the city, where the Four Seasons community is completely surrounded by a census block that's in another, that's in, that's in another neighborhood. And so, we'll be looking at this and giving you, we'll be creating some maps that we'll put on the website, we'll be talking about this at some of the neighborhood forums, community engagement forums as we go on. Now, in addition to that, we also are going to provide a series of tools. And the way I like to think about this is we want to hear from you, no matter how you want to participate. So, we have everything from blank maps of the city with some major roads drawn in, that you can just kind of indicate on these maps what your neighborhood is or what area you think should stay together. You don't even have to draw a whole city map, you can just do this for your area. We have this, we're going to have these available in English and Spanish. We have all that up to the online tool where you can literally go in block by block, the way that we do as professionals, to draw your own set of districts. And so, as we get, as we get into the process in July, we're going to be walking you through how you use each of these at those community engagement forums in July. But for now, what we want to start in the process is trying to answer your questions about what we're doing here, what information can we provide to you to help you succeed in drawing, in getting a set of districts that works for the city? What are your neighborhoods or communities of interest, or what principles, in addition to the ones adopted by the city, should we look at as we start drawing district maps later on in August and September? What other kinds of communities of interest exist? And I say, you don't have to feel like, if you don't feel like you know the whole city, just talk about your neighborhood, just talk about the area of the cities that you know the best. And please reach out to us, we have contact information for both the city as well as for us, palmsprings@ndcresearch.com. You know, we'll, we get those emails, we read them, we get back to you, go through the city clerk as well. We also have a city website where we have information about how you can participate, and all the meetings will be listed on there as well. So, with that, thank you. If I can answer any of your questions, I'd be happy to do so.
Do we have any questions before we open to public comments? Councilmember Holstage?
If I could just make a comment, thank you for the public that's here and the people listening. You're facing us and asking us what our neighborhood community of interest, and it looks like you're asking us, the council, but in fact, we are asking the public, and we really are going above and beyond our legal duty to involve the public in this work, and so, please know that those questions are directed to you, and we do want your feedback and your comments now and in all the other meetings that, that we just explained. So, thank you, I just wanted to make that clear because it looks like you're talking to us, but really, it's to the public, and we want your feedback.
Thank you.
For the camera and all the people at home as well.
Yeah, and we'll have public, city council comments after the public session, if there's any questions, the staff right now, any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing, and we have currently four people who wish to speak. First is Kurt Watts, then Robert Findley, and then Amado Salinas II, and then David Friedman. If anyone else wishes to speak on this item, please put a card in to the city clerk. John.
Okay, good evening. As you indicated, my name is Kurt Watts. I'm a sixteen-year resident of Palm Springs, and in addition to serving for over three years in the initial formation and as a board member for the Sunrise Park Neighborhood Organization, I worked over fourteen years in the field of economic development for the cities of Palm Springs, Ranch Mirage, and Cathedral City. I mention this in way of my background, as I've closely observed city councils at all three cities, including their electoral processes and the daily workings of all three of those, including the recent conversion to district elections in the city of Cathedral City. I got to sit through every meeting of this type of process and observe the input of the neighbors, and so, I bring some insight into that. At the risk of countering the city attorney's comments, though, in terms of limiting comments to communities of interest or the districts, I did want to comment on a couple of things which will certainly impact the eventual selection of the individual districts. Number one, as an idea, either as part of this process or on a parallel track, I'd like to suggest that the city investigate changing to a ranked choice voting procedure for each of these districts once they are adopted. And then, secondly, it's my feeling, based on my prior experience, that there should be five districts with the mayor's seat to be determined annually on a rotating basis from the five elected members. So, I know from my personal point of view, as I participate in this process, I'm going to be looking at five district seats instead of four as I start to look at communities of interest. In terms of the ranked choice voting, this has been in the press recently, as you may know with the San Francisco mayor election, but it is something that is in many cities across the way. And I think it's important to think about this because I think we do anticipate a large number of candidates from each of these districts once they're formed, and ranked choice voting has a lot to offer in terms of making sure that those eventual elected city council members represent a large percentage of their residents.
Thank you, Mr. Watts. Next speaker is Robert Findley, followed by Amado Salinas, then David Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, staff. I sat down this afternoon in front of my computer and started to write up what I was going to have to say this evening, and came to the conclusion that it was going to take a whole lot more than two minutes. So, I'm converting it all into a letter, I will send it to you and to appropriate staff members, and you'll get all of my thoughts, and you'll have them in writing, so you can refer back to them anytime you wish. That's really all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Findley. Mr. Salinas, then Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mayor Moon, thank you, city council, staff, and police chief, thank you for your dedication. I'm here as, Mr. Watts, so eloquently put it, it's the ranking positions. Once the districts are formed, how then do we go ahead and really get that district represented? You know, do we find out, and are there limitations? Does a person decide, gee, I can't vote in this district because someone else is ranked, so he moves to another district and essentially starts to build up there? So, those are some of the concerns that we have. I think districting will be beneficial to the city and give it a good representation of each of the districts. So, I commend the city council in moving forward on that, but again, we have, the ranking procedure will help us in the districts to go ahead and get the qualified individuals as we get into the position. And thank you for everyone that is actually sitting here, coming to the city. It really is a great pride to see that we have interested individuals within the residence to be here to go through this lengthy process, so, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas. Next is David Friedman. If anyone else wishes to speak, please put a card in to the clerk at this time.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portemonna, city council members, wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but I'm serving as Chair of the Governance Committee of One PS, but because I'm only addressing what was just provided before the meeting, I am speaking on my personal capacity, because I just want to address two minor points, or not minor points, actually, but two points, comments on the maps. First, the neighborhood organization map is not the current one, it's probably at least a year, two year and a half old, two neighborhood organizations that were formed within the last twelve to eighteen months are not on the map, and one has since renamed. So, I will work with Ms. Goolsbee tomorrow to make sure that the correct map is provided for NDC. And second, I think it was addressed in the presentation, I did take a very quick look at the population units on the paper map, obviously, it's hard to read the whole city in one eight and a half by eleven, but at least two neighborhood organizations that I've already identified are split in the population units. So, to the extent possible for the presentation to One PS on July twelfth, it would be helpful if the map that was then presented did reflect the neighborhood organization map. So, two quick comments, and thank you for the process.
Thank you, Mr. Friedman. We have two more speakers now, Paul Zach, and then followed by Grace Gamer.
Good evening, my name is Paul Zach, and I have no particular expertise on this issue at all, but what I want to say is that one of your operating principles, I think, is extremely important, and that is, as you're doing this, that even though we're going to have district elections, which I'm totally in favor of, I think it's really important that every member of the council, no matter what district they're from, represents the whole city, in the sense of working for the best interest of the whole city. And it's very easy to fall into sort of a territorial viewpoint of one's council responsibility, and I just really want this to be forefront in these deliberations, that that organizing principle be held to very firmly, that each member represents and works for the benefit of the whole city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zach. Our next speaker is Grace Garner. If anyone else wishes to speak, they need to put a card in, otherwise, Ms. Garner will be our last speaker.
Thank you. I wanted to thank you all for extending this, this session and having so many opportunities to speak about this. One of the things that is my biggest concern is the census, because the census is from 2010, and if you look up any school yearbook, you will see that our Palm Springs is nothing like it says in the 2010 census. So, I also am concerned, and you know, as I look around the room, there's not a lot of people here, and not a lot of people talking about the communities, and so, I'm interested in what is going to be done if the next meeting is a low turnout, and the next meeting after that, and if we're getting low diversity, you know, what is it that can be done to make sure that we get the community here and participating? And one idea that I have is to extend this to the schools. At every level, this is a teaching moment, elementary school to high school, they can draw maps, they can tell us what their community looks like, and we can look at that, and that's a great way to understand really what's happening on the ground and what's going to be our future for Palm Springs. So, I would love to be more involved in this process, and I look forward to it, and, you know, I'm a resident here, and I've, I grew up here, and in my memory, there's only been one person of color on the city council. And speaking with my mother, who also grew up here, she also has that same memory. So, I'm really looking forward to having more diversity on the board in every way, and to represent communities that I grew up in, that I know are usually not here at these meetings, and not necessarily because they don't want to be, because they don't always have the information. So, thank you very much, and I hope to be involved more.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Any other speakers?
No, there's speakers.
Seeing none, we will close this portion of the public comments. So, Councilmember Coors?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. A few points, and the city clerk explained sort of the three phases of this, which I appreciate. Do want to note that how we sort of do the vote, whether it's runoffs, ranked- Do want to note that how we sort of do the vote, whether it's runoffs, ranked choice, or just top vote getter, even if that person only is 10% of the vote, because those are the three options we have, is going to be part of our Phase Two. In Phase Two, we're also going to talk about whether we maintain our current odd year elections or we move to even years, and how we will do that. So that will be part of that Phase Two process, and we're going to want public comment on that when we get there, which will be right after the summer. But people can definitely start thinking about that. The other thing, and I love the idea of reaching out to the schools, which we will do, but we actually have really, we've looked at what other cities have done, and typically they're telling us they get, you know, 15 people showing up at these meetings. And we really want to see our community is a very engaged community, and we want the community to be engaged, which is why, you know, we only had to do four public hearings on this, I think we have 14 meetings. But we have a full plan on trying to engage the public. A mailing will go out, once we adopt the schedule tonight, to every single address, every resident, every business, every property owner, with the schedule of hearings in English and Spanish. We have bus shelters going up. I'm sorry for the candidates who still have some bus shelters, so we may take you over, because they leave them off forever. But we have bus shelters going up to direct people to the website. We're doing, deliberately doing meetings in the neighborhoods. We're doing one at James O. Jesse, we're doing one at the Demuth Community Center. And I love the idea, let's add the schools to that plan. But there's a broad effort. We're going to be doing radio ads, we're going to be doing TV interviews, to really get the community to know this is happening and how they can weigh in. And other than these two sort of, you know, I don't know, they're, for most people, they're not as interesting as when we draw the maps, I think. Hopefully, that will really engage people. And our demographer and some of us geeks think it's fascinating, but I think when we get into drawing the maps, we really want to see, you know, people weigh in and give us their ideas and send in their maps. Every map that meets a legal criteria will be considered. And we moved all those meetings to a non-council agenda, one, so the city can do its business, but also, you know, if you have to get up at six in the morning, because you work in landscaping, or construction, or a school teacher has to be there at 7:30, you can't wait till 8:30 at night for us, or often it's later by the time we get to public hearings, for us to discuss this. So we want to make sure we're doing it in hour, and we'll have Spanish language translators available, to really make sure we're providing every opportunity to do that. And hopefully, through One PS, we'll get folks to reach out to their neighborhood groups as well. So I just wanted to sort of share that, and we're looking forward to the process. Thank you.
Mayor Protam Roberts?
Wow, you said just about everything there. You know, I, I was fascinated by Kurt Watts. And Kurt, if you don't mind coming back up for a minute, I'm, I was fascinated by your, by your experience in this, and your interest in this. And if you don't mind taking another minute here, I wanted you to finish what you were saying, and my question to you also is, if there are specific areas in this, or specific things that you witnessed, that you think would help us in this process, I'd love to hear that from you.
Well, and as the other gentleman commented, I will follow up with a letter in a little more depth, because it'll take quite a bit of time to digest everything that I guess I could give input. I guess I would say that, you know, aside from the two specific suggestions I had, what I observed, especially in Cathedral City, they had the same issue in terms of how to get more people out, and especially from the minority community. And I think they did a very good job, but I think you will surpass them in what was done. But having said that, the types of issues that came up along the lines of communities of interest, and I think there was one reference made in the materials, was some neighborhoods are very large, and because of the census tract data and commonality, there was a debate between, is a large neighborhood better served by having part of their neighborhood in one district and part in another, so that they basically have the ear, if you will, of two council members on a regular basis? Whereas there's the natural inclination that everybody wants their whole neighborhood kept intact. And so that was one item that was discussed at great length. Another one was in terms of Cathedral City trying to redevelop its downtown area, and we obviously have much further along than they in that respect, but we have some very distinct commercial districts. And there was a lot of discussion about, in order to not have just one council member representing the downtown, they created some districts that basically sliced up or touched the borders of the downtown areas. And you might want to think, or the community may want to think about that, in terms of, how do we make sure that the business interests and that economic development tool is one of those community of interest topics? Okay? Those are the ones that kind of jump out at me. I did find it interesting there as well, that because they, like you, had a set of council members where there may already be, in some of the early maps, one, two, or in their case, they actually had three council members in one of the districts that was being formed. And the natural thing was, well, does that mean those council members are going to compete against each other in a future election? Are one or two of them going to move? Or are they just not interested in running again? And so that was in the background, and as I understand it, the way it was presented by the demographic firm there, that is a factor that can be considered in terms of having some longevity and not totally disrupting a council with a lack of seniority, if all of a sudden you just put all the existing council members in one district, because that's where they happen to live in close proximity. It's okay to use that as a factor if the alternative would mean you're going to lose four of your five council members in the next two years, simply by virtue, and then all of that brain trust. So those are some random thoughts on the topic.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. That's helpful. You know, I know we're going to have many, many hearings on this, and right now, I more want to just be a sponge. This is a new process for me. And so I'm most interested in what the public has to say, but also what we're going to learn as we go along. One major concern I had with this, this presentation we got, is a lot of the information looked very dated to me. And I very much agree with the last speaker, who, who, you know, told us that we're a very, very different city than our 2010 consensus, and I very much agree with that. I know how radically Palm Springs has changed in the last, you know, eight, 10 years. We even have a millennial on the city council 10 years ago, and we might not have even had a millennial in this city. So we know we've changed pretty radically. So anyway, that's my biggest concern. I'd like us to focus very early and very quickly on getting updated information. Obviously, we can't do a census, but which, you know, I'd love staff's ideas, Dr. Reddy, on how we can get better and more updated information on our neighborhoods and our populations, just short of doing a census. And I hope you have some ideas for that. I'm not looking for an answer this moment, but it's something I want to drop in your head. And that's all I have for right now.
Councilmember Middleton?
I want to pick up on that theme, because I think all of us know that the 2010 census data is dated. It would certainly be much better if we were dealing in 2011 with brand-new census data as we go through this process. My understanding of the law is that we have extremely limited to zero flexibility when it comes to basing our decisions. In 2018, based on the 2010 census data, we have as well minimal flexibility in terms of the variance that we can have in population from one district to another. Some of us may know where there has been some growth and can try to factor that in to a degree, but we're going to be very limited in our ability to do that. I want to move from that, though, to thanking staff, and particularly our city clerk and our city attorney, for the work that they have done on this and will be doing. I don't think either one of them was short of responsibilities before this issue got dropped in their lap. And they have really responded for us, as well as the task force that's been put together to provide recommendations to us. We've asked that task force to look at every single issue, and ranked choice voting was one of the issues that is out there. And that's going to take, if we go that direction, a tremendous amount of education of the public, because it is a more complex voting system, but it is one that does have some advantages in that, in an extremely crowded field, which we can anticipate, it makes it more likely that the ultimate victor is an individual who enjoys majority support within a district. And if we have a crowded field and a small turnout, you could unfortunately find yourself in a situation where someone's elected to the city council with only a few hundred votes. And that's not been possible in the past. It will be possible in the future, and ranked choice is one of the many alternatives that we have to try to move beyond that. I really want to thank Ms. Garner for the recommendation to go to the schools. We know when we go to our schools, we see the population that is very different than we see anywhere else in our city, and it is our desire to reach out as broadly as we possibly can throughout this community, engage the community, so that ultimately, we're going to get districts in decisions that not everyone will agree with. But if we can get to the point in December that we are making decisions where individuals are able to say, I understood the process, at least the vast majority of people saying, I understood the process, that's something that we are truly striving for.
Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few comments and questions. First, I'm incredibly glad and grateful that we're going through this process and we're taking as much time as we are. I think this is such an important issue for the future of our city, which is growing and changing, and so I'm just grateful for everyone to be involved in that. Just some comments. One, I want to make sure, though, we have a very clear process and procedure that we're doing as a city council. I would suggest that we don't limit public comment, which I know we're not, but just making it clear that people can provide comment on general issues, just on this process, because maybe we might be the only ones who are going to go to all 14 meetings that we have so far. Someone might only be able to attend one, and I want to make sure that we can take their testimony and hear it and consider it. And it's a little bit complicated, the process that we have set out, though I think we've all done a good job of making that quite clear. But I want to make sure the public is included in all of the discussions, even if they can only attend tonight, for example, that they can still give our, their feedback. I noticed that we don't have, that all of our community engagement meetings are sooner rather than later, when a lot of the tougher work is going on. So I know our city clerk said that we can add those later, and I think we probably will want to, since that's when maybe more and more people will be engaged in this process, when it gets closer to the end. I'm wondering, for a charge for One PS, if you're our liaison, councilmember Middleton, if you could ask them to do outreach to neighbors that don't generally attend One PS? The diverse, One PS is excellent, the diversity isn't always as diverse as we like. And so if they could do that work, I think that would be really important, if they can do their own outreach. We have hired, the city has hired a diversity outreach coordinator, who's here in this room, who is doing a lot of outreach to different communities of color, people who speak Spanish, and we're grateful for that work. Perhaps they could link up with One PS and do some of that work. Because if we're going to be very reliant on the existing neighborhood organizations, we have to understand that, that those organizations were sometimes formed when minority voters weren't engaged in the process. And we want to make sure that they're engaged in the process, especially if we're relying heavily on those neighborhood organizations as they are now. I'm wondering, I saw our city clerk nodding along, that we had to rely on the 2010 census data. Can you explain that a bit for me?
So, much of the federal requirements and state requirements, the mandatory requirements that are to be considered when drawing these districts are reliant on the census data that was collected from 2010, and then the updates from the American Community Surveys. It may not give you a lot of solace, but in 2021, when the new census data is released, the city is going to have to do this process again, and update its boundaries based on the new census data. So, when you do get the updated information, you'll be able to have another bite out this apple.
Our term goes to 2021? Thank you, that's helpful.
And I just, I just wanted to add one quick thing, is that eligible voter number, the Steven Sinson Voting Age, and the ACS Community Survey data, that came out earlier this year and covers a period from, that ends in 2016. So it is a little more recent, but this is what it takes the census to get the data to us. We have the most recent data available. Like you said, state law actually requires us to use that survey, because it's the only one released at the census block level that we're required to look at.
Can we use other data from the school districts?
So, we can adjust districts, and we, especially for over and under, maybe if we know there's growth areas, if we know that there are demographic changes since 2010, then we can certainly take that into account as part of justifying a district. But, you know, that, that's good, that definite, and we should, and I mean, that's definitely a part of the process. The legal, the legal requirement, though, is to rely on the census data. So we're trapped in this, you know, these, we want to take it, we're going to, we've actually been looking at where we've seen growth areas, especially higher rates of growth. You know, we've been looking at, you know, the city was 12% Latino by eligible voter in 2010. Now it's at 16%. And we have a good idea of where that change has been coming from. But, you know, we know that that itself is already two years out of date, but that was released in January. So it's kind of one of these where we welcome this other data, and we work with the city and other agencies to get that information. But at the end of the day, we do have to come back and make sure that we have the census data in order to get a legal map.
So we're required in part to consider the census data, but we can also rely on the additional data that we can obtain in considering the districts?
It's part of our 10% deviations, population imbalancing between districts. It certainly is part of our communities of interest.
Thank you. I'd really like to see us try to obtain that data as much as we can, because I agree that Palm Springs has changed. I saw a few people here who had some expertise. I'm wondering if there might be spots on the working group as we move forward, especially as we get people engaged in this process, that we don't have a closed working group, and that we allow people who are interested, and, you know, we're recruiting new people to this process, that we could add those people to the working group, I think would be really important. I'm wondering if we have a liaison to the Desert Healthcare District process, if someone from our council is sitting in on those and watching those, that might be really, we have the same consultant, so I guess you can provide that, but that might be interesting. I'd be happy to volunteer to do that, or if someone else wants to. It seems important to learn from their lessons and bring that forward to this body.
And we have, councilmember Middleton and I have met with them to go through what they, what they're going through and to share information. So that has happened. I think, did they just have their first or their second? They're not doing as many meetings, because they're on a much tighter time.
They're, they're working with it in 90-day timeframe. They actually will have their adoption meeting next Tuesday here in Palm Springs at the Desert Healthcare Foundation in the city of Palm Springs.
Thank you. And then is your presentation, this is online as well?
That's right. And we also have a lot of that data as one-page PDFs as well. So if you don't want to flip through the presentation, we'll have the demographics, we'll have the maps available as one-page PDFs. And, you know, we'll provide, you know, we have that part of it. We also will have a number of other resources, including online maps, where you can search for addresses and stuff as we go through the process.
But we can make sure this is online immediately?
Absolutely. First thing tomorrow morning, this presentation will be online.
And more specifics on demographic data, can that be added immediately as well? Sort of the breakout of the table that you provided? Or is that all that we have right now?
Well, we can certainly, we can certainly provide some thematic maps, even of the, of the American Community Survey data. What, I mean, I mean, I mean, there's just a lot of information there, and I'm just wondering, in particular, is there anything specific you're interested in, like population?
If I could jump in, so when the interactive mapping system's online, when, when I've tested it, when you click on a census block, you're able to pull up all the demographic data that's presented on that larger sheet, but for that census block.
Great. And when will that be on?
That, we're expecting to. That, we're expecting to have up and ready for the public in mid-July, so that it's part of that mapping process.
Okay.
We're working on a technical issue with that, but we're getting it up as soon as we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, seeing, I guess we don't vote on this, though, do we? So we just move on, okay? The next public hearing. Item 2C, approved purchase and sale agreement and escrow instructions with Harold Kiesler Trust and James Edward Murphy Trust for a successor agency-owned property located at 342344 North Palm Canyon, in the amount of $500,000 pursuant to Section 34191.5 of the Health and Safety Code. And staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has to do with a project dating back several years, and which resulted in the sale of this property being made last January 2017. Unfortunately, the project did not materialize, and the sale did not go through, so the city pursued other means to dispose of this property. And at its meeting on March 21st, council directed staff to obtain the services of a commercial real estate broker to help dispose of this property. Staff did so, and the broker, Sperry Venice, obtained an offer from the buyer being recommended here, the Kiesler Trust, in the amount of $500,000, which is an all-cash offer. On June 6th, the city council also directed staff to proceed with this offer in negotiating it, and this was during a closed session meeting. So at this time, staff is recommending the council approve the offer and authorize a city manager to execute all necessary documents and forward this item to the Oversight Board.
Thank you, Mr. Farada. And for people who aren't familiar with this address, this is the cork and bottle liquor store, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions to staff before we open public hearing?
And Mayor, I would just note that this is in fulfillment of our state requirement on former RDA properties to hold this hearing.
Okay. City Clerk, do we have the, anyone here to speak for the applicant?
I don't believe anybody's here for the applicant. We do have two public comments.
Okay. The next speaker is, the public speakers, we have two, Del Gagnon and Mustafa Kahil.
Gentlemen, I have aged. I've been a 50-year real estate broker in Coachella Valley, selling many, many pieces of real estate. I was the one that brought Lezinc to escrow or to contract to purchase the property, because I sold them all the adjacent property, so well aware of everything. I worked with John Raymond Goodman, and then he left to go to Carson, so I've been working with Diana Shea. I don't know if she's here. Diana, she was, when she told me, I brought the property, what I'm asking is, I've given you a brief summary, which is more than I can say, and if you can read that real quick for part of my two minutes. And then the tenant, Mustafa, is also here, who definitely has to and needs to buy the property. You've taken away his right to sell the property, because he has no lease, he's month-to-month, he has a buyer, but the buyer cannot perform, because alcoholic beverage doesn't approve a license without a lease on a property. He has no lease. I told him, and he must buy the property. He is here, we're going to make an offer of 525, which I told him, this is what the city wants, pay the price to the city, let's get it done, because you need to own the property. So I'm asking you for courtesy to read my letter briefly. It states the facts. When Diane said, December 14th, that the property was coming back on the market, I said, "Then anybody can buy it?" She said, "Yes." I and my family made an offer of $400,000 cash, 30-day escrow, exactly what the escrow was, and she said she would submit it. I don't think you ever saw it. I called her a few days later, said, "Well, the city is going to reappraise the property and take a look at it, and I'll get back to you." Well, there was no getting back, and no getting back, and then...
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Thank you very much. If we have any questions further on this later?
You better take a good look at both letters.
Thank you, Mr. Gagnon, your time is up. Our next speaker is Mustafa Kahil.
Good evening. My English not very good, and I write everything I need to say, and I hand to you the paper, and I'm here if you have any question. My English not good, and I write everything in paper, I hand it to you.
This is a time for public comments, so it's not a dialogue between the council and yourself, sir.
Yeah.
Do you have any other comments you wish to make?
Yeah, I hand out all the paper, what I need to say.
Okay, thank you. If we have any questions for you later, one of the council members may call you up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, any other speakers? Seeing none, we will close the public comments. Okay, comments, questions by city council, Mayor Portman Roberts?
Yes, and, well, two things. Our broker here that assisted us with this is here in the audience for some, can clarify questions you might have. But first, Jay, could you please explain the process that we went through in order to bring this to the agenda this evening?
Yes. In the fall, again, as Dr. Reddy has indicated, this is a former redevelopment property, which we have been directed to sell. At the time, the plan to sell this property was to be part of a hotel. That didn't happen. And so there was no, that escrow, which was open, we were not allowed to market or sell the property while it was under escrow. We made several efforts during that time to contact that potential buyer. And when we learned from the planning department that that hotel project had been withdrawn, we sent several letters to that prospective buyer, did not hear anything, and indicated to that buyer that if we did not hear back, the escrow would be closed, and we would be remarketing the property. And that was January of 2018, when that happened. And that's when we took it to council. And the council at that time did direct us to obtain the services of a commercial broker, which we did, and as indicated, he's brought forward a good offer for the city. In regards to the tenant, we were in a difficult situation, in the position of selling the property, and not knowing with that lease, he was requesting it be renewed for at least a year, and we didn't know if that should be the best process. So we proceeded to sell the property, and that would be the new owner's decision.
May I ask my question?
Yep.
Thank you. So, Dr. Reddy, what I wanted to ask you was, this is an odd situation. I don't think in any of my time in either council I've served on, we've had someone come and bid on a property here in the council chambers. So this looks a little sticky to me, and, you know, in the public process of us garnering the highest dollars for the property, it's odd to me that someone's coming in to overbid. I'd like to either hear from you and your staff about how to handle this, or if we need to hear from Mark Spawn, who's here in the audience, on whether he's familiar with this, and there's any action we need to take, or how we handle this.
Actually, I would like Mark to come on down and to address the process as he performed it, but I would note just a couple of general things. Obviously, this property belongs to the state of California, it's part of the Redevelopment Agency. They have tasked the city to sell these properties, and at the end of this month, actually, the successor agency then moves to the county. That being said, I understand, and Mark can clarify this, is that this is a cash offer, an offer that's ready to be sold to, on the table now. Apparently, the tenant had a non-cash offer contingent upon other things, and it was a much less offer at the time. So with that, Mark, could you please explain where we are?
Okay. So, I'm Mark Spawn, and...
Mark, will you get closer to the mic?
Yeah. When I began marketing the property, I sent notice out to everyone who had expressed interest in the property in the past, that I got names from Jay and Diana.
Including the tenant, you had had conversations with the tenant, or the...
The tenant wasn't a...
He wasn't a buyer?
He wasn't a buyer.
It's the other gentleman?
Right.
Mr. Pidiya.
Mr. Pidiya, and so I actually spoke with Mr. Pidiya on the phone, and he said he wanted to make an offer, and I said, "Great." He says, "But I'm going to make it through my broker, Steve McBride at Hughes Properties." And so he did submit an offer, and then we got another offer from Mr. Kiesler, and then we got another offer from Mr. Pidiya through Steve McBride. And then yesterday, I got a call from Del Gagnon, saying that he represented Mr. Pidiya, but Mr. Pidiya had only told me that Steve McBride represented him, and all the contracts I had were through Steve McBride. So I didn't feel comfortable, who's his broker? Is it Steve McBride, or is it Del Gagnon? And I didn't have any authorization that Del Gagnon was his broker. So, you know, if we want to get into it, I don't know, I don't think, you know, the offer I have is all cash, and it's a 45-day escrow, and the other one, if it's a financed deal, there's no preapproval letter for the loan, and I think it's contingent upon getting a loan. If we want to get into a bidding contest, then I think it's another matter altogether, that people can come up and start making bids at the city council meeting.
And if I could, I would note, council, this is one of those sort of state-mandated processes, where it's their land, they want us to sell it. The bottom line is, we can just let them sell it. Then next month, it's going to be the responsibility of the county, and they can do with it however, whatever they want. So our charge was to offer it and give it to the highest proposer. That's our duty, and that's what we have here with you this evening. However, if there's other circumstances, council doesn't particularly care to move forward on this evening for any reason, you don't have to do that. We could just let the county successor agency take over it in early July.
Or I have a higher bid, if somebody wants, if we can make higher bids at this meeting.
Well, we've become a real estate auction house.
If council wants to entertain other bids, the other option is to remove it from the agenda and bring it back on the 11th, or in addition, just allow it to, is cheat to the county successor agency.
I want to make a legal comment, and I apologize for interjecting. Dr. Reddy is not overstating this as a legal process. Our Oversight Board here in Palm Springs doesn't do business anymore after June 30th. So you can come back July 11th as the successor agency, and you can have a hearing, and we can be engaged in the sale of the property, which is what was identified in the Long Range Property Management Plan. But at some point, it's going to go to an Oversight Board after this body makes its decision, and if you want it to be the Palm Springs Oversight Board, you'd better do it now. Because unless there's another city council meeting in June, you won't have another bite at that apple.
So, to complete my questions, I, it's a little bit uncomfortable. My instinct on this, because the stories that we're getting are a little bit difficult to understand and follow. Obviously, Dr. Reddy, we chose to go ahead and sell it as a city, because there's a potential that the city could benefit financially versus handing it off to, handing it off back to the county to sell off. And we've gone through that process with Mr. Spawn, and I know the offers are coming in higher than we had even expected, which is, again, a benefit to the city. I know we don't get to keep the majority of these dollars, but we do get to keep some of them, is that correct?
Approximately a third.
Approximately a third. So the more money that is paid for this property, the more we as a city benefit. My instinct would be to give this back to Mark Spawn, to give us his best recommendations, you know, hear this offer, see if this was legitimate, and maybe empower you to make the final decision on this, given that we have sent this through the public process, we have followed the state-mandated process in selling off a piece of property, and we have heard it publicly. That would be my recommendation on this. I certainly don't want us to be fielding offers at the diehard.
Well, I want to interject again in response to that comment and the whole process we're engaged in right now. There's a concept of fiduciary duty that each member of that Oversight Board here in Palm Springs has with respect to their taxing entity. The city, in its capacity as the successor agency, has its own representatives on that Oversight Board. And as a practical matter, the price is not always the only thing that matters. There may be other district interests or city interests that motivate a school district board member.
I understand that, Mr. Cottkin.
I apologize.
I'm not questioning how this process works. I'm just simply saying, the process doesn't look over to me yet, and I'd like, I'm suggesting we give it a little more time and give it off to staff to maybe make the final decision. That's all. And I haven't heard from my colleagues yet on it.
Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I have a few questions for staff. It is difficult for us as a council, and I always say this each time, we get something this day, this evening, because we got your letters, which I really appreciate just now when I sat down, and I was trying to read them as quickly as I could while you were speaking, and we really want to give you the time and consideration, because it's important, and we value your business in Palm Springs, and we're grateful for all of your business that you've done here for our city. So, you know, that said, I don't want any precedent that every time we get a last-minute letter or an offer, that we change our course, because we do, we did go through a process, but I agree with my colleague that the process is unclear to me. And it sounds like the tenant or the, any potential owner wasn't actually notified in this process, and that we, is that right, that they weren't reached out to, to see if they could, would be interested in purchasing the building?
I believe they actually did give an offer early on, is that correct, Jay?
I believe the tenant was notified, and in fact, I had a conversation with him also. And when I say tenant, it's not the prospective buyer, it is the gentleman who operates cork and bottle.
The operator?
Correct.
Explain why that's different than the tenant cork and bottle?
Oh, no, that is the same, but there is a, an individual trying to purchase the business cork and bottle, not necessarily the building, but the business. He would also like the building, but his offer was inferior, and...
Is that who provided public comment right now?
No.
That's somewhat different. Okay. And so, Mr. David, Dr. David Reddy, could you explain to me what happens when you, when we miss that deadline? So what happens? So you said it might go to the county board. Can you specifically explain if we miss the deadline? And can we just give you the authority to make the, make this decision before the deadline, or do you need council action tonight?
I would say the, this is a little different process, it is a state process that mandates we have to have this public hearing. So I, council would need to act this evening. What happens after June 30th, it's only a change in the state process, insofar as, instead of you acting as the body that's going to approve it, the county successor agency is going to act as the body that approves it. That's the only difference. So this will just be their decision.
Who makes up that body for the successor agency?
That's going to be, and Eddie, help me, the county is appointing those individuals?
The county has control over the appointment of those individuals? I want to pick up on your comment, if I understood your question to Dr. Reddy correctly. I think I heard you asking him if the council could vote tonight to empower him prior to the Oversight Board meeting to effectively represent the city's or the successor agency's best interest in this transaction, and execute any transaction that he deems in the best interest of the successor agency, since, if I'm hearing council members, you don't think you have all the information. Is that about right?
Yes.
I'm okay with that, if Dr. Reddy's okay with that.
But just to be clear, the criteria would be, who has the best offer in the city's interest? Now, I would just note, and this is a question maybe for either Mr. Spawn or Jay, what is our obligation, are we currently in escrow now? What is our currently, current obligation in good faith with the purchaser?
If I may...
Now, I would just note, and this is a question maybe for either Mr. Spahn or Jay, what is our obligation? Are we currently in escrow now? What is our currently, current obligation in good faith with the purchaser?
If I, if I may indicate, I believe the successor agency, which is the city council currently, will remain past June 30th. It is the oversight board made up of other individuals and representatives that will become one countywide oversight board. However, we do not know what their processes will be, how long it will take to process sale of properties, which means the tenant will be in limbo that much longer.
But what is our current, what is our obligation to the current buyer in good faith?
Right, nothing right now. The current proposed buyer is looking for this approval to open escrow.
Okay.
I have another question, unless you had a comment on that. So did we list this property on the MLS or the, I forget, the commercial MLS? Did we list it publicly, or did we just have our, our broker reach out to certain individuals? Okay, thank you.
You may want to repeat that answer for the public who didn't hear it.
You indicated it was listed on all the Internet vehicles?
Thank you. I knew someone who looked and didn't find it, so maybe that was that person. Personally, I don't feel comfortable voting on this tonight, and I would ask that we either vote to give the city manager approval or authority to make the best decision in the best interest of the city. For me, for a redevelopment property, there's more interest than just the higher amount, including supporting local businesses, which is important. So I'd just like them to have consideration, and I don't have enough information to know if that happened tonight.
I would also note, if you wish to delegate that authority to Dr. Reddy, you could appoint a liaison or a subcommittee ad hoc to assist in that process.
Sounds like you asked for it.
Councilmember Middleton?
I'm not sure I want to say anything since it usually takes two to be on the subject.
You could get voluntold.
I think I personally like the idea of giving the city manager the authority to make a decision. There's a couple of issues, though, that I want to get, and I clearly want to support local business. But anyone who's been through a real estate transaction knows that there needs to be a deadline, and that deadlines exist for a reason, and it would be fabulous for all of us to be able to wait until that deadline has passed and then be able to prooffer a new offer that is just slightly above what the, the final offer was. And so I think in fairness, we need to have clarity around what our deadline is going to be. And I believe we have up here on this dais a fiduciary responsibility to the city to get the best deal possible for the city. And sometimes that deal, as any of us who've been through a real estate transaction knows, is an offer that is in cash as opposed to one that is heavily leveraged. And so I'm willing to give the city manager the authority to make a decision based on his judgment as to what is firmly the best deal for the city, but there needs to be a very fixed deadline, which gives each and every person who's going to bid an opportunity to put their best offer out without knowing what the best offer is from someone else.
Mayor Portem?
I don't remember what I was going to say at this point. I, my question to you, Dr. Reddy, is if we as a council tonight decide to go ahead and give you the authority to make that decision at any point you feel you want to make that decision, is that something we can do? We clearly have an offer that you can approve, but if you see under further review of what's become before us tonight, that it's worth pursuing, you make that call. I just am uncomfortable with us doing that here tonight. If you feel you need to do that in the next 10 days and can accomplish that, I would, again, rather see you, you do it with your staff. And by the way, Mr. Spahn wants to comment, and I'd love to hear that.
I'm willing to pay $5.50.
Let me offer this. This is where I think it might be appropriate. Just because, you know, just so you know, it's context, we've been trying to sell this piece of property for about 10 years, just so you know. So there's been a lot of notice. Let me just offer this. I think because a subcommittee on this for a very specific reason would be, for a week, would be important, only because we need to do this within the next week or so, and because potentially, we could be selling it to a purchaser under value. And that's something that I would be very, very hesitant to do unless the city council was clear that we were doing it, and at least a subcommittee, for whatever reason, in the best city's interest, would be on board with that. So I recommend if we did do that, we did have a subcommittee mayor.
Okay, I concur with most of these comments made tonight. And one thing about this building, though, it's in deplorable condition. All right, Dr. Reddy?
It is.
It is in really, really bad condition. I think it probably has asbestos in it and all sorts of things. So there's a lot of factors involved in this, and it's historic. It's an historic building. So it's in deplorable condition, it's historic, and so there's a lot of factors other than just the price. So I certainly agree with what Councilmember Middleton said about there's deadlines for a reason. And with Councilmember Holstidge said we shouldn't be doing real estate bidding at city council meetings. That's a terrible precedent. So I agree with letting Dr. Reddy look at all the factors on this. He's certainly an expert in this area. He's known this building since it's been on the market for the last 10 years, and let's empower him to do this, because we know he's going to get at least $500,000. So... So we'll make sure... I'm sorry, you're out of order, sir. You're out of order, sir. So I'm just saying that I support us letting Dr. Reddy do it, and we can have, appoint two people to work with him for the next week. Anybody want to volunteer?
I would prefer not to, just because of a few different reasons, which aren't in financial conflict, but I just don't want to be involved in the transaction.
That's right. Actually, I, we may have to do a check on me, Jay, because I own a property in El Meridor and a property in North Palm Canyon, so I might fall into the radius as well.
I'm willing to do this, and I don't own anything other than a house in South Palm Springs. But...
Congratulations, Lisa.
I will only be available by phone, though, for most of next week.
Just have one person?
Yeah.
Okay. One person's fine. Is it, all you need is one, isn't it?
That's fine. Lisa, that's fine.
Fewer nooses that have to be strung if it goes wrong.
So we have a motion to, a motion...
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Dr. Reddy, city clerk, you want to make the, restate the motion? The motion we have here is to approve this based upon Dr. Reddy's looking at it. We approve him to take action on it and make the best decision, what's, for what's best for the city. And the price will be at least $500,000, and you'll look at these other options.
And to execute all documents related.
Again?
And to execute any and all documents related to the transaction.
Yes. Okay, do we have a motion? And Councilmember Middleton will work Dr. Reddy on this. Councilmember Roberts? No. A motion's been made by Mayor Portem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Coors. Motion is on the floor. Sorry, sir, you're out of order. Sir, you're out of order. Sir, you are out of order. Please be quiet.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. You guys want to take the nine o'clock, seventh inning stretch? Okay, we will take a 10-minute break? Five-minute break, which means 10 minutes.
You know, the oversight board meeting.
Item number 2D, filing of nuisance abatement resolutions, reports for three public nuisances. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is your annual public hearing for code enforcement abatements. This last year, there were three that were performed by the city's Code Enforcement Division, and those are noted in those three separate resolutions. The total lien to be filed with the county is $8,851. This is a public hearing. I'd ask that you open the public hearing, take any testimony, and adopt the resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We will -- any questions of staff before we open the public hearings? Saying none, we have opened the public hearing. Do you have any wishes to speak, Mr. --
No public comment?
Seeing no one who wishes to speak, we will close the public comments. Any comments by city council members on this? Motion approved, Mayor Protem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Holstage. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, and item 2E will be continued to -- well, city manager will be scheduling.
Mayor, I would just formally note that this would be continued until our next meeting on July the 11th.
It would be a date certain, Mr. Mayor. It would not be re-noticed. I would ask that you open the public hearing with the understanding that there won't be public comment taken this evening, but the public hearing will be preserved as open, and it will be continued on July the 11th.
Okay. I guess that's the staff report. So, we'll open the public hearing, and we will be taking no public comments at this time. That closes the public hearing. So, do we have a motion to continue this to a date certain of what's the date?
July the 11th, please.
July the 11th. Motion is made by Mayor Protem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Holstage. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Okay, the next item is item 4A. Under unfinished business, item 4A, ratification of tentative tract map 36691 is conforming to its approval by City Council Resolution 240585, an approval of the deed of trust and security instrument associated with the development agreement with Palm Springs Country Club LLC related to the Serena Park project, a 386-unit residential development located north of Rona Road, east of Sunrise Way, and southwest of the Whitewater River Wash. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a housekeeping item related to the Serena Park project that was approved by council last year. There's two elements to this. The first element, Mr. Fag, will touch on in regards to ratifying the actual final form of the tentative tract map. And then the second part relates to the security note to secure the development fee as part of the development agreement. Mr. Fag.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, in terms of the tentative tract map, staff finds that the tract map is in conformance with the approval that you granted back in September of 2016, and so consequently, we are recommending approval of that, and we just need your action on that. And, Mr. Fuller, I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be said relative to the tract map.
So, that was one element of tonight's action. The other element relates to a final action by the city council relating to the development agreement approved last summer. In its negotiations and approval of the development agreement, the council gave careful consideration to what's called the development agreement fee. In this context, for this project, what was negotiated was the fact that in return for converting open space at the Palm Springs Country Club to residential development, there would be a density transfer and a cost, and that negotiated fee was $3 million. The council's direction to staff at that time, and what was incorporated into the terms and conditions of the development agreement, was that that $3 million fee would become due and payable in full three years after the effective date of the development agreement, and that the council wanted to review and approve the form of the security instrument that would be guaranteeing the city's receipt of that payment. A note was provided to the city's contract attorney by the developer at the end of last year. That note that was provided proposed a $3 million guarantee that would become due and payable in three years. However, it proposed that that would not go into default at the end of three years, but would then be paid out at 4.25%, I believe, interest over the following 17 years. In reviewing the proposed note, we did not find that was consistent or conformed to the council's direction to us that that $3 million development agreement fee be paid in full three years after the effective date of the development agreement. So, we had multiple conversations with the developer. The developer presented their arguments for why they felt their note conformed to the council's direction. We disagreed. We've had several meetings. We had a city council subcommittee that was appointed to meet with the developer and work with staff, and what's been presented to the council tonight is what was directed by the city council subcommittee, which was to maintain that this development agreement fee is payable in three years, but did provide another three years to the developer at a higher interest rate during which time the developer could secure financing to pay the city in full for that development agreement fee, or alternatively, just pay the city over the three years for the balance of what was owed at a higher interest rate. So, you have the developer's letter and their proposed note in your supplemental folder. The development agreement itself has not been executed, is not effective, because this last remaining piece, the note that secures the development agreement fee, is what has held up that execution. So, we would recommend that you consider the note that we've provided based on the direction we received from the city council subcommittee, but as an alternative, you have the note that the developer has offered in their arguments presented in their letter. So, with that, I would return it to you for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, before you begin your council consideration of the matter, I do want to note for Brown Act purposes that the letter and the note drafted by the developer transmitted to me that was referenced earlier in the developer's comments, it is in the yellow folders. It had been transmitted to the council previously, but it is available for the public if anyone wants to review it.
Thank you, Mr. Cocken. Councilmember Coors?
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, so I'm sure I understand this. In my recollection of that rather lengthy discussion on the development agreement was, I think, at one point, the majority of council thought 10 years was appropriate, but we finally fell over really said they needed 20, and that's what we ended up agreeing to, and part of that discussion was the $3 million, no later than three years. So, what the subcommittee -- I just want to make sure what the subcommittee is recommending is that we extend that another three years with prime plus 3%. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And then, let's -- if the council were to do that, and the money wasn't received at that date, we'd have to go to court. What are our -- what is our remedy? What are we going to do? And what is it going to cost us to do that? Maybe a better question for Mr. Cocken.
I think I'll try that one.
Please.
Yes, we would have the legal ability to foreclose on the note if the terms of the note are not complied with by the developer. You're correct that there would be some cost associated with that. I doubt highly that if we were in that situation that we'd be dealing with it amicably at that point in time. I suspect that lawyers would be necessary, and the judicial process would be involved. Difficult for me to give you a precise cost. I think our rights and remedies are made clear in the note and in the deed of trust, so I'm confident that the city's interests are protected if the transaction is acceptable to the council.
And, let me ask, because anything we do, every other developer is going to ask for. So, from a precedent point of view, I have some concerns here. So, what do we normally do for cash with density transfers? How much time on the last number of times we've done this, have we ever agreed to six years, 20 years?
Actually, this is the first one in my memory that we've done, actually.
Where there's been a --
Cash for density. Usually, it's been a trade, an actual trade of land for land.
Which has value, and we get that at the same time.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have for questions. I'll have some comments after.
Councilmember Middleton?
Councilmember Coors got my first question, so I'm going to ask the second. I want to make sure that I understand what it is that Palm Springs Country Club is proposing, which everyone agrees that they have three years in which to pay the $3 million, and they're supposed to be paying that based on $7,772.2 per lot as those lots are being sold. Is that correct?
That's correct, if they end up selling lots, so.
But if they do not sell enough lots to get to 3 million, or if they don't sell any lots, they're still due paying us that $3 million at the end of 36 months.
That's correct.
And they're proposing that whatever that shortfall is becomes a note that's payable at 4.25% interest per annum that exists out over 17 years. Am I correct?
That's correct.
And what I think I've heard them say is that they're satisfied that we could take and go on to the market and be able to sell that note immediately for -- to someone who would be interested in that secure judgment that they would get 4.25%, and we would be selling it at some kind of a loss against that 4.25. Am I correct?
With that last additional statement at some level of loss. I don't think the developer's contending that we'd get 3 million or the balance of 3 million.
So, we're going to lose some money on that interest. Have we ever done anything like this before, and have we ever been in this kind of business, and how would we go about doing what they were asking us to do if we wanted to? And I will underline the if, if we wanted to.
I would just note the answer, in my 18 years, we have not -- I don't recall doing this kind of transaction. The second part of your question is, I don't have -- I don't know, actually, if we even have the capacity or ability to do that. Now, we certainly may. It's just I don't see a very clear path to guarantee the city will get its return dollars.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Roberts?
Thank you. If I understand this correctly, I guess, Jay, I'm focused on you then. I'm looking at page six, and I guess what's -- I guess that's not relevant to my question. My question is, do we hold a first -- if we're going to be extending this, do we hold a first deed on this property? If they -- in other words, if they go belly up or they sell this property, do we hold a first deed? Is this -- are we -- do we have a position in this?
I think I'll handle that if I understand the question. It is going to be secured by a deed of trust. It's not just a note. We can foreclose. We can secure possession of the property.
That wasn't my question.
I apologize.
I'm sorry, Eddie. My question is, what position? Or is it a first? Are we in a first position?
Our interest would be subordinate if I recall the terms of the note correctly.
Ah, that concerns me. So, if this property is lost, if this property -- or if something goes wrong with this property, we're not in first position with this.
I think that's accurate, and I think it's also safe to say that if we wanted first position, we really would not be giving the developer the opportunity to secure other financing.
I have big concern about that. I want to know where -- who we're behind.
The developer's lender or lenders.
And for how much money, because if we don't have a ratio to value on this, this may be a really bad deal for the city.
I don't want to speak for the developer. I don't have that information, so.
Well, we need that information. I don't feel confident making this decision until we know, you know, if we're going to become a lender, I need to know -- I need to know a little bit more about the person we're lending to. So, furthermore, if I understand this correctly, the subcommittee's making a recommendation that the $3 million payable in three years, and if they don't, we then loan them the balance. Is anything actually required to be paid in the first three years? Because based on what I'm reading, nothing is required.
If they sell houses, yes. If they don't sell houses, then maybe not, as a practical matter.
So, wait, I think what I heard in your answer is no. They're not required to come up with anything in the first three years.
That's my recollection, and the bottom line is that after the fact, we'd have the right to collect on the interest as was stated.
I get that. I get that. I just realized, though, that technically, they don't have to come up with a nickel in the first three years if they don't want to.
It's related to the sales, so yes, that's correct.
I don't care what it's related to. Technically, they don't have to come up with one nickel, correct? Technically, by what is being proposed here?
Yes.
Thank you. End of questions.
Councilmember Coors?
I'm just thinking, you know, when we do public improvements, right, and fellow brothers put up a bond for that, so we don't lend them the money. So, I'm really concerned about this lending them the money. This came up, actually, with a hotel development wanted us to sort of lend them money upfront that we'd get paid back later, and this council didn't think that was a really good role for this council. So, I'm concerned about that, and despite some of the comments I heard earlier, it's not what was agreed to earlier. I'm also concerned, because we had a long talk about this at a prior council meeting, when we decided three years, and I'd like to see this project move forward, but I share the concern. It wouldn't be the first project that goes under and goes bankrupt, and then our note goes away, and we have a real problem on our hands. And so, that concerns me. And, you know, when we did it, we sort of identified what we're going to use the money for. We have no money in our open space fund, as I understand it, and that concerns me, the risk to the Chino Cone as well. So, I am not, at the moment, although I'm open to being persuaded, wanting to change this. And we're changing something we agreed to, but we're not then getting anything new for it. And we had a lengthy meeting, three of us were at, with Councilmember Mills, where we really discussed all this and came to an agreement. And so, if we're going to change an agreement, then we should have some more thought and discussion about what may be reasonable. I appreciate the subcommittee's proposal, which I understood from comments from the developer, which met -- which -- developer, which met, which wasn't acceptable to them, but the note that, you know, goes to 2037 at a lower interest rate than most people can get for their home mortgage is clearly off the table in my, in my view. But if the subcommittee feels strongly about what they're recommending, I'm, I'm open to it, but I'd love to hear any other thoughts from the subcommittee, if they have any. If not, that's okay, too.
Yeah, I, I agree that, you know, the city's not in the business of loaning money, and we're certainly not in the business of taking unnecessary risks. And it's not like we're taking, we're asking for the $3 million to put it in the general fund. This is a density transfer, and so this $3 million has a specific person, a purpose of purchasing other land elsewhere that's privately held, so that land will be open space in perpetuity to replace this open space, which will no longer be open space. So I know when Councilman Middleton and I met with them, we, we were trying to offer something that was an alternative that might be reasonable, but if they don't want to accept that alternative, then I, perhaps if this is, if this development's not going to work, perhaps it's better that it just die earlier than later, and just, just go and, die on the vine over years and years and years. But I don't, I don't want to put us in the position of taking any risk or giving, or loaning money.
Councilmember Holstich?
The, this has been a difficult conversation, and we have wanted to see this project, I think everyone up here has wanted to see this project succeed, and I know how much time and energy has gone into it. What we were trying to do with the offer that was put forward that we're being asked to do here, is to treat this in the fashion of a late payment. If you are, if you have a mortgage that's due, and you don't pay that mortgage on the due date, you get a late fee for it. And that late fee is supposed to be sufficient to incentivize you to, to not want to be late again, and to go out and try to find some other way to secure more income, or some other way to, to resolve your obligation. And what we were trying to do is present the applicants with an opportunity to be able to do that. And I would agree with the mayor and with others. If this is not an acceptable alternative, I don't know what is, but, but taking this out for 17 years with a note at four and a quarter percent is simply not acceptable.
Councilmember, Councilmember Mary Protam Roberts?
Thank you.
I think I was next, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we're starting to have a little button problem.
We are.
Go ahead, Councilmember Holstich.
You may have been in the queue, but no one knew it.
Thank you. You know, this is, this is difficult, because what we have in front of us is something to ratify and approve that the developer has said is an endpoint for them, it doesn't work. And so I'm not comfortable voting for anything that just doesn't work for this project. I support this project, I know the community supports the project. It's the only development project that I get stopped at parties to talk about from residents of Four Seasons, so thank you for that. It has a wide range of community support. I want to see us comply and uphold the terms that we agreed upon, and maybe we learned some lessons about leaving some of that open as we move forward. I'm concerned with some of the stalling, or just the length of time that this has taken, and I think it's important to move it forward. So I'm wondering, from the subcommittee and staff, what other work or negotiations can go forward before we vote on something that will foreclose a project? I don't think any of us don't want to see that money go forward, or go to the Chino Cone. You know, that's all important, but it seems like there's still room for negotiation, but yet this is in front of us.
And I want to comment on what Councilmember Coors said, is, we had a long discussion on this a couple of years ago. Sorry, I've got Middleton and Roberts.
No, I know, it's just, it's, I was there and it's gone, the whole system's fine.
You know, David Aaron went home, so all the buttons aren't working now.
His hands.
This is very brief. I, I remember that meeting very distinctly, because we had a long discussion on this, and I thought we were very clear. If they sold a lot, they were going to give us a certain percentage of it, I don't remember what that percentage was, each time they sold a lot, and then after three years, they would pay the ball, the remainder of the $3 million. It was very clear to us at that time, and I don't know why there's all this confusion afterwards, but I'm actually see what the recommendations are on this.
Middleton's on three times, now it just changed again. I'm gone.
I would like, if possible, to ask the applicant a question.
Sure. Could the applicant, please, come up, please? You're next, and then Holstich.
Thank you for, for hearing our side. I heard a lot of what you just said, and I'd like to try to clear the air as best I can with all of you, because I really think that we, the overall goal of what we're trying to do, that we're all exactly on the same page, so we actually need to talk about, how do we get there? How does it work? And there's a disconnect between some of the comments that I'm hearing and what we want to do. So what we heard, clear as a bell, which I think every one of you has stated, from the staff, is $3 million in three years. In August last year, we were asked, after the hearing, to produce a note to make that in effect, and we did that in less than a week. And we gave you the structure from our business to make sure you get that $3 million and not discounted all of that $3 million, because the subcommittee brought that up, we brought that up, and the mechanism to make sure that it is not discounted is well-known, well-documented, and we have provided that to the city. So it's, no, there is no discount.
It's 3F.
What's that?
Section 3F.
Yeah, section 3F of the note, and Mark's here to get more technical about it, but I wanted to make that very clear to all of you. From a standpoint of a development agreement, and we understand this is the first one done in the city of Palm Springs, Mark and I have done lots and lots and lots of them. The standard in California is for the development agreements to be paid incrementally as units come through. That didn't work for you because of the Chino Cone, you needed $3 million in three years, and because of that, we constructed a note to get you the $3 million in three years. The way that works is, you market the note. If there is a discount marketing that note, we have to make up the difference so that value of that note goes up, so that your net becomes $3 million, and that's in the section 3F. So that's what we did. If we end up having a situation the way that the note was constructed by the staff, instead of $3 million, it's $4.5 million, and it's a default provision that doesn't work, it's not lendable to. I can't go, in order to build a project, this is not a $3 million project, or a $5 million project, just to build House One, it's $10 million, just to get off the ground, to do that. That money is borrowed. We go to a bank and borrow it. If we have provisions in a note that structured the way we got from staff, no bank in America will give us a loan. We're dead. I got to make that really clear to all of you. We work in a world of finance, I work with equity partners, it's got to work, that's why we structured the note we did, and you told us $3 million in three years, that's what we wrote. Very simple.
Mr. Taylor, can I ask a question?
You bet.
Sure. So you offered a note-
Yes.
And what, what we have said is, we don't want to be in the mortgage business.
We understand.
All right. So what I don't understand, is you have an obligation to make a $3 million payment within three years.
Right.
If you fall short of having sold enough lots-
Yes.
In the three years, you're going to have a shortfall.
Correct.
Why can't you go out and borrow money to cover that shortfall at sometime in the 24th to 36th month?
Because the, the default provision is just that, it covers, it covers all defaults. So if we do have an economic disaster, we're not going to be able to borrow money.
That's the obligation, though, that you're taking on.
That's right. But we won't, and we're not-
And rather than, and so what you're asking us to do is to assume that risk, as opposed to you assuming the risk.
It's true.
And I, I don't think council is interested in getting into the mortgage business. And we'll, and I know how much work's gone into this project.
Yeah, well, this, you've got a piece of blight, I, I hear you loud and clear. We've got a piece of blight, and we're using housing to bail us out. Here in simple, I, I, there's no other land use that I know that's going to provide the money to do it. And we don't have endless pockets that we can just write checks, that doesn't exist.
Every development includes risks, and that's, that's the business you guys are in.
That's right.
It's not the business that cities are in.
That's, that's what we do with development agreements.
Okay, Mayor Protam Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I, you know, I think the subcommittee did a good job on this. I think the subcommittee created a very generous counterproposal. I don't want to get into the he said, he said, between what the developer's saying and what our staff is saying happened. What I recall very clearly was that we had a $3 million payment to be made in three years. What sounds like happened to me after that was a renegotiation, and the developer came back to the table for another bite, after years of process on this, on this project. I know, because I've personally been involved with it for years. I have no problem with what the subcommittee's recommending. I have no problem with the three years in three years. I think it's a generous proposal. I'm even okay with us making that loan for the second three years, is because there's an interest in it, there's a benefit to the city on that money. What I am absolutely unwilling to do is take that risk unless it's, we're in, we're in a position where if they default or lose this property, we risk losing the money. If, if, we had that discussion on another project tonight, and as long as the cities, the city has absolutely no business partnering with a developer and taking a risk with city dollars, I would, I would see that as a massive failure on all of our part. But if we're guaranteed the dollars, I understand us supporting a developer and helping them move forward, just not partnering with them and shouldering risk. If they can't afford to finance their properties, their projects, it's not our problem. And, you know, if so, if they can't handle this project, if, somebody else will come along and handle it, there's a great opportunity there. And that's all there is to it. Yeah, it's a blight, because another developer blew it. That's, again, not our fault. Some, in this market, somebody will buy that property, and somebody will come up with a plan to develop it. But unless, just to reiterate, I'm fine with what the subcommittee, I'm ready to vote on that, but I have to know that we have a first position, or a position that is covered in a bank sale. That's all.
And I don't think we have that information.
We don't. And I don't, and I'm not even comfortable with us negotiating all this at the dais. This wasn't ripe. I, I'm not saying that staff screwed up, I'm just saying this wasn't ripe. The developer clearly is saying they can't do this deal, and we're, and it's almost like we're, again, selling, you know, auctioning off property at the dais. It's a very odd night tonight.
So, Mr. Mayor-
So what I'd love to suggest is that this go back to subcommittee one final time, if the subcommittee can stomach it, and make, and if staff would get us the information on our risk level on the loan, that might make a big difference. This might move very easily, they might be able to work with that. If not, we need to move on. That's my recommendation.
Is there a consensus, or a general consensus on the council, that if we were in the position to be the first in line, if defaulted, that you might be accepting of this alternative?
Or eve, I just want to say, or even second in line, as long as there's enough equity there that we're covered in the sale.
Okay, understood.
And I do want to sort of address the paragraph that Mr. Allen referenced in their version of the note. There's a dispute resolution protocol that's in this note, where what's the note really worth gets decided by one expert, and then another expert, and then dueling banjos, and if we can't agree, we go to a third expert whose determination is final, and they have to pay an inflated amount per month during this whole dispute period. And at the end of the day, Dr. Reddy and I were talking, it's the market, right? The market's going to decide what the note is worth. I'd be a liar if I told you I knew what this note would be worth in the event that that all happens, and how much we could actually sell it for.
That's, Mr. Stokotkin, that's true, but this property has a value.
Of course.
And it has, it has a value on the open market.
Yes.
And is, you know, are we, are we behind a $5 million note? What are we behind? Are we behind a $2 million note?
That I don't know.
My understanding is they paid $1 million for the property. What are we behind? That's, that's, if I had that figure right now, I could make it, I could make a decision right now myself, but without that information, there's no way to know. We just simply don't know where we are in line on a repayment and a default. It's a really easy answer. I, I get what you're saying, no problem.
Councilmember Holstich?
If I could just second that motion, I, again, believe that it's not ripe. I don't have enough information, I'm sitting here trying to, which, by the way, we got the fixed rate note from the developer in this letter after our staff report, so our staff report isn't able to compare, so I'm sitting here trying to compare these documents, which I just can't do right now. So I agree it's not ripe, I don't want to negotiate from the dais, I would support and second your motion to put this back to the subcommittee, and then bring it forward when we have all of that information.
Are you guys willing to take it back?
Sure, table it to a time uncertain, or a time certain?
A date uncertain, yeah.
Okay, Dr. Reddy, you, did you want to speak?
No, no, I was just going to recommend exactly what you suggested, but it, this is the end of a multi-year process. There was clear direction from council, clear direction to the developer, they knew what it was. Obviously, they, they prefer something different, but sometimes we need to have this process so they can fully hear the council's sentiment, we go back to discussion, and perhaps there's a better negotiated agreement to come back.
Thanks, John.
So do we have, we have a motion to table to a date uncertain, and the subcommittee will meet again, and we'll get more information from staff on the position of the city on the, on this.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, next item.
Even the main screen's going.
Next item, item 4B, approval of a reimbursement agreement between the City of Palm Springs and Coachella Valley Association of Governments, and approval of plans, specifications, and estimates, and authorization to bid, and delegation of authority to award construction bids for the Indian Canyon Drive two-way conversion and pedestrian and bicycle safety enhancements. City Project 78-08, staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This project is the Indian Canyon Two Way Conversion and Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Project. The city was awarded a $2 million grant for a $2.7 million bicycle pedestrian safety project on Indian Canyon. Subsequently, the city received approval for an additional $1.5 million for a $2 million Indian Canyon two-way conversion project. It's important for the city and SEVAG to have this project under construction during the off-season. SEVAG wants the bicycle pedestrian improvements completed, because this is one of their signature projects for the region, they want this to be the, the project that everyone looks to as the success, and it's important for the city to get this project completed during the off-season in order to minimize the impacts to the business community. For that reason, we're asking the council to authorize the city manager to award the construction contract during the August recess. We're still, one of the items in the project that was originally included in the project was the roundabout at Camino Paracela in Indian Canyon, Palm Canyon. That improvement required the acquisition of right-of-way, and it wasn't quite bait. So we took that out as a separate project, are pursuing signalization of that intersection, but we're still pursuing the design and the construction of a roundabout by a separate project. With that, staff recommends the council approve the plans and specifications, authorization to bid the project, approval of the SEVAG agreement, and authorization for the city manager to award the contract during the August recess. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think it's coming from Mayor Protam, his name's up on the- His name's up on the screen. Did you push the button? Councilor McCorris?
We've got to leave this.
Yeah, I know.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to really, you know, when this came to Council a couple of years ago and, I don't know, what was it, $100,000 we spent to actually do, figure out what it would cost us and come up with some plans? And people are like, why are you spending money on something you'll never do? Just a reminder that sometimes you have to spend a little money to go out and get grants. And I just want to say, you know, I know Marcus and your team did such an amazing job to get this much funding for this project is remarkable. And so I really want to thank you. I want to thank the Subcommittee, which is Councilmember Middleton and Mayor Proton Roberts, and both the mayor and Council Middleton and various SEVAG committees were there representing the city. And I'm just thrilled that this is moving forward and really, you know, if staff didn't do the amount of work they did and we don't sometimes take chances and spend a little money, we wouldn't have, you know, two and a half, 2.7 million dollar, whatever it is coming into the city to, for pedestrian safety, for bicycle safety, and to make our downtown. I mean, we're actually going to make our downtown contiguous now between the convention center and the downtown project, which is something I think the city has wanted for as long as probably you've been here, Dr. Reddy, which is 102 years. And so I really, I don't know, you don't age, it's scary. So I just really want to commend everyone who worked on this. I've mostly been on the sidelines, but just watching the different pieces come together just shows what we can do and how amazing our staff is. So thank you. That is it.
Councilor Middleton, I think. You want to go first? Go, David.
I'll be very, I just want to especially thank Dr. Reddy. I, I want to second everything Councilman Corr said. And I want to thank you, Dr. Reddy, because this was a, this was a dream without a dollar less than a year ago. And you made real magic here, as you often do, but this, along with Marcus and the rest of the staff, did an amazing job with this. I don't think I ever smiled as hard when I saw the balance due on this project. I think it was $10,000 at a 2.7 or something, and you guys hit it out of the park. And this is going to be such an amazing improvement for this city, and it can't happen soon enough as we're already building a lot of traffic downtown. So thank you, thank you all.
Councilor Middleton?
I guess I get to be third on thanking Marcus and Dr. Reddy and, and Tom for all of your work. This is, this truly is going to be a game changer for the south end of downtown and for those of us who live on the south end of town, as well as everybody who uses Indian Canyon. The roundabout, I see that you're trying to keep it alive. What do you need to make the roundabout work and how realistic is it that we can pull that off?
We need, we need a design that addresses truck turning. We think we're almost there. It's going to require a bit of right-of-way acquisition. We're trying to minimize that. The, the cost right now is unknown because of the extent of the right-of-way acquisition. It's very doable and it's, quite frankly, the right location for a roundabout. The number of intersections, I, coming into that one location, roundabout would be a much safer traffic control measure for both pedestrians and vehicles. So yet, it is a real, it is real, and we're going to continue to try to secure funding for it.
I simply want to express my solid support for trying to make it happen. And if you need to come back to Council to, to get additional assistance on that, please do.
Councilor Holstage?
Thank you. I just have a quick question about the modified roundabout while we wait to find funding for that project. So can you explain the modified traffic signal design in the meantime? Is that that picture on page six?
Actually, the picture, the picture on page six is the, is the modified roundabout.
So that's the proposed roundabout?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, no, that, that is.
Because we, we are modifying the intersection, right?
That is, that is the modified roundabout. And you can see the right-of-way tank, the right-of-way takes in the lower left, lower right-hand corner where the sidewalk approaches closer to the building and in the lower left-hand corner where we're taking out a bit of the vacant lot. So that, that is the modified roundabout. The signalized intersection is going to be much more similar to what you see on page four.
So the intersection won't be changing very much unless and until we move forward on a roundabout?
That's correct. We're going to be reducing the nose at where Indian Canyon and Palm Canyon come together to facilitate turning movements, but the, the geometry of the intersection won't be changed radically.
Thank you.
I, this is a great project, and I just want to reiterate what everyone else says. To thank Marcus and Dr. Reddy. SEVAG's a hard sell because you've got nine cities all fighting for a limited pot of money. So to be able to get these two grants was, was, really showed excellent work. And the timing is actually excellent because Landas Hyatt is moving along well, as we've all seen, and also the Tribe will be starting construction soon on their $88,000, $88,000 square foot development right on Indian Canyon. And one thing we've mentioned in the past on this, another reason for this is to slow down that traffic on Indian Canyon because it's like Le Mans, where people are leaving the Coachella Valley on, on Sunday. So this is, this is a win-win-win all the way around. So we have a motion approved by Mayor Proton Roberts and seconded by Councilmember Corr. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes five to zero. Councilmember Middleton, do you want to just note for the record that that's a yes vote?
Okay, and item 4E, Dr. Reddy has pulled that off of the agenda and I'll be bringing it back at a later date. Okay, next we will be going into item 5A. Item 5A, approval of facility use agreement with Palm Springs Power Baseball Club for the Palm Springs Stadium. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you'll recall, earlier this year, the Council approved a limited-term agreement with PS Power, which expires the end of July. The terms and conditions of this agreement are essentially the same as that agreement, except the term is much longer. It's a seven-year term, three years with two, two-year extensions. We've discussed with Mr. Starkey the terms and conditions of this longer-term agreement. He's agreed to those terms, except for one minor change that I've handed out to you. Essentially, in lieu of a 60-day termination clause, which has been in his agreement and hasn't been an issue, obviously, because we've never terminated his contract, he's asked for a six-month termination clause just because of some of the advanced bookings that he is involved with, with some of these leagues. And so if you're agreeable to that, we've proposed that change and that's what I've handed out to you. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll return it to you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Corr?
Thank you. So I do think, I spoke to Mr. Starkey, I think that's a good change, given there's a summer league and a winter league, and it's different than when he started. And so if Council's agreeable to that, I think it would be good. And I just want to really also just take a minute to acknowledge PS Resorts because they're using their money to fund half of his rent to make, to make this work because they think it does help tourism, it does bring in TOT from the players, and it's a good thing for the city. And I think this was a, a great effort and really, again, thanks, staff, for, for getting this done.
Thank you. I concur. And also with the, the extension is probably important, too, because as you mentioned, he's, he leases so many hotel rooms that those agreements for the hotel rooms are also longer-term. So it's very important for him to have a little bit of flexibility on that. So we have a motion to approve made by Councilmember Corr, seconded by Mayor Proton Roberts. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes five to zero.
Next item, item 5B, which is early lump sum annual payment to CalPERS towards retiree unfunded accrued liability. Staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor, could I just confirm that the last motion was as amended?
As amended, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, on this, Mayor Council, on this staff report, Mr. Keel is here to address any questions you have, but we wanted to highlight this, obviously, within regards to the, the CalPERS expenses. This is one tool that we have that we can have, actually save a little bit, actually substantial amount of dollars, in this case, $250,000, by making this prepayment. Jeff, could you just explain the, the two reasons, things that we're concerned about are, one, do we have the, the cash flow to do it? And could we make more if we kept it invested ourselves? So Jeff, could you just explain those two items?
Yes. Am I on here?
Yes.
So, yes, the number one, of course, do we have $9 million in cash available to make this early payment? And yes, we do, thanks to this time of year, we get an influx of property taxes right this time. So instead of immediately pouring it into locked-in investments, we keep this money on hand in order to make this payment. The other portion of this is the analysis that I do to see what are we giving up by giving away $9 million at the, the beginning of the year versus leaving it in our investment portfolio for the whole year? And you see that calculation here. So we're actually losing about $80,000 in lost interest, but that is more than offset by the substantial savings of $330,000 upfront by making this payment. This is the second year we've been permitted to do this early payment. Last year, we saved $220,000. So Dr. Reddy says it's a great way to make significant savings with very little effort and no risk.
Okay, questions of staff? Councilor McCorr?
Thank you, Mayor. Take advantage of, while you're still here, Jeff. So is the reason, as we look at the lost interest is 2%, which is how we would invest it, and CalPERS is looking at it, they're 6.5%, right?
That's basically correct.
And so just going back to sort of our conversation with the state comptroller, is there any thought this makes sense, right? A lot, a number of cities are, instead of keeping their own pension reserve at a 2% or less rate of return, having CalPERS manage that at a 6.5%. The same logic would apply, right? That would be the anticipated delta?
Yes.
If we want to do that. I know that's not on the agenda, but I just wanted to make sure I understood the logic of the numbers. So if we want to think about that in the future, we know what that is.
So the, so the question about this is really a bet over the future about where interest rates are going to go. You could, if you don't have money available, then you have the option to borrow. Many years ago, at the advice of one of my predecessors, we entered into a pension obligation bond for approximately half of our unfunded liability at that time. The, the challenge is that when you get down the road, the data becomes obscured and it, it's really hard to analyze and say, did that work or not? I mean, you can, you can do some analysis. We worked with our financial advisor substantially and we think it, it turned out okay, but it's definitely not a given. I think, you know, it, this time, the GFOA advises against doing that kind of borrowing. So the only other thing is if you have extra cash reserves available, you can go ahead and pay down part of your unfunded liability. I think we're a little thin in our general fund reserves to be doing that, but certainly to whatever extent you can make, even modest extra payments, that's good. But just a reminder to the public, we keep talking about the, the new PERS reserve that this board established, this Council established a year ago when we were doing, looking at our projections over the next six years of averaging 6.5 million dollar increases in our minimum required contributions. So that's very, that's different from the unfunded liability. The, the minimum contributions is what we must pay year in, year out. So if you were to take that $11 million that you have now, pay down your reserves, your minimum contribution is still going to be approximately 6.5 million each year. So you only get about a nickel on the dollar's value for decreasing your minimum contribution, if that helps at all. I think that's a point that is easily missed.
Right. And then with, the way CalPERS is doing this advance payment, it's based on their projection. So if they make more than the projection, it doesn't go, it's, our number stays the same. If they
Yes.
Lose money, our number stays the same. I mean, once we make this, we're done for the
I think it's their way of nudging.
Yeah. Okay, just want to make sure we're good. This is set in stone once we do. Okay, that was it. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilor Middleton and seconded by Councilmember Holstage. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item, new business. Item 5C, approval of a resolution authorizing the California Statewide Communities Development Authority to form a Community Facilities District within the territorial limits of the City of Palm Springs to finance certain public improvements and development fees, embodying a joint community facilities agreement setting forth the terms and conditions of the Community Facilities District financing, approving an acquisition agreement between the city and Celine Park Palm Springs LLC, a California limited liability company, and authorizing staff to cooperate with the authority and its consultants in connection thereof. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. What's before you tonight would be the city's establishment of its second public financing district for a commercial project, the first one being the Rive Hotel through the state's program. The benefit of doing it through the state is the city doesn't have any of the liability or headaches of administering the annual debt service for these financing districts. The Dream Hotel, as it's been described for you, for your information, does include 30 residential condominium units in addition to the hotel and all the ancillary commercial uses. Those condominium units, as I understand it, are going to be the type that are essentially rented back through the hotel, but it's important because those residential units will be levied at, an assessment of tax through this financing district in addition to the hotel component of the project. What's proposed is a 6.4 million debt, which includes the costs of the issuance for the, the financing, netting about $5 million to pay for various city fees and public improvements, as well as some fees and improvements with Desert Water Agency, which would be subject to a, a separate acquisition agreement that's authorized by your action tonight. The city and the state pretty much have the same standards for these financing districts, which require a four-to-one value-to-lean ratio, which this project will more than accomplish, and not more than a 2% tax rate. The projections at this point have the tax rates at 1.8% to 1.9% on those condominium units. And so with that, we would recommend that you adopt the resolution, which essentially established this, this new community facilities district specific to the property related to the Dream Hotel. The consultant is here if you want to get into the weeds of the financing and, but other than that, we'd recommend your approval. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Do we have any comments, questions? Matt, Councilor Holstage?
Thank you. Can you explain the condo units in more depth to me? So this is part, I don't think it was mentioned in the staff report. So these are condo units that are part of this development as well? I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, the Dream Hotel does have a residential component. These are going to be very high-end, million-dollar-plus units that are pretty typical for four-star-plus hotels with a residential component, where the owners essentially can rent back the units to the hotel and they operate as hotel rooms. Or they can be permanent, you know, condominium units for those owners that choose to live there permanently. But there is that residential component, and so they've split out the financing appropriately between the bulk of it with the hotel and some of the, the debt service going to those condominium units.
How many condo units are there?
There's 30.
And so, sort of like a timeshare, well, where they're going to actually sell those condo units
Correct.
To private owners? And so, like the skip program, the costs of all of these fees are going to be passed on in part to those owners?
That's correct.
But it's all part of that same development? So they still would benefit from the parking and, or they still need to sort of And, or they still need to sort of pay for some of those sewage and drainage that are related to the project, right?
Yeah, they would benefit from the improvements and fees that are financed.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Councilmember Holstage, I'd like to comment, mention that when we had the discussions on this, were rather lengthy. It was pointed out to us by the developer that there is people nowadays who would like to buy these condos, and they would have the availability of the hotel services. They could have their, their meals brought to them, they could have housekeeping services, et cetera. So that's actually a model that a lot of upper-income people really like to have now, where they don't have to worry about it. Okay, do we have a motion to approve by Mayor Portem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Coors?
Motion passes, five to zero.
Next item, item, new business, item 5D, award of a construction contract to Matriarch Corporation, a California corporation, the amount of $5,95,165, and approval of a purchase order in an amount not to exceed $135,050 to Interwest Consulting Group for construction management inspection and materials testing services for the 2018 pavement rehabilitation city project number 18-01. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. And council members, what's before you tonight is the 2018 pavement rehab project. This project consisted of a base bid and four alternates. The base bid would rehabilitate streets with a PCI of 52 and 53. The bid alternate A would rehab a portion of the streets with a PCI of 54, and would also address the deferred streets that were not done in previous years due to utility conflicts. Those streets have PCIs between 46 and 51. Bid alternate B would construct drainage improvements on various roadways, using drainage funds. Bid alternate C would rehab the parking lot at Indian Canyon and Arenas. And bid alternate D is the pedestrian improvements at Museum Way. With that, staff recommends the award of this project and award of the, or authorization for the PO for construction inspection services. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Portem Roberts?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question on this, and it doesn't relate directly to the staff report itself. What I have noticed and experienced personally is that these companies that we hire to do this roadwork are not noticing well. In my own neighborhood, I was completely locked out. They, they often notice and then don't do the work, and then come at another time with no noticing. So people prepare their driveways and do all sorts of things, and then the company never shows up. And they, and then when they do show up, they're surprised that the neighbors are angry because they're now blocked into their driveways and can't get out of their houses. I fear there's a safety component to this, too, when massive trucks are blocking streets, and ambulance and emergency equipment can't get to them. In fact, I had, I've heard this from different people in the community, and yesterday, my own contractor couldn't come to my house because, again, with no notice on the property, he couldn't get out of his driveway for a repaving project. So this seems to be a problem. I've had this conversation with Marcus in the past. How do we ensure that these companies hold a high standard with respect to communication with the community?
It's incumbent upon us to inform the contractor what the requirements are for noticing, and
But how do you enforce that they actually do it, Tom? That's my concern.
And that's where the CM services come in, as well as city staff oversight of both the contractor and the construction management firm. We need to step up our oversight of the construction management firm to ensure that he is looking at the contractor's schedules, keeping us apprised of what the changes are so that we can inform both the public management and the council when, when changes occur, and then be responsive to the complaints that come out that we aren't noticing adequately or giving enough advance notice. We have been on the receiving end of many of those complaints as well. We have stepped up our, our oversight of the construction management firm, ensuring that he is being responsive to the neighbors when the complaints come out.
So you know what the definition of insanity is? So I'm hoping that there might be a better system or checks and balances on this, because this has been going on for a while. And I think when these guys get here and they're awarded the contract, maybe there's a bonus penalty situation in this case, or a penalty when they don't notice neighborhoods? Something, something in those contracts that holds their feet to the fire?
We will step up our efforts on making sure they comply with the noticing requirements.
Okay. So if I could ask, so Tom, what, what additional step in the process would you recommend? That you have a comfort level, that the notice is, is beyond adequate, the minimum we have to do, and would fall into that category where the council would have a comfort level that we've done everything we can?
What I would need from the construction management firm is the schedule from the contractor at the beginning of the contract, when he's going to be out, and then weekly notices on any changes of that schedule, not, not the day before it happens.
Great, so, so you could schedule your weekly meetings with the contractor?
Yes.
To be assured that you get that information?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll, we'll discuss that further, but I think that would be a good idea to implement that with this contract. One of the question I had, is you know, the council approved, I think it was $350,000 in the airport budget to do Kirk Douglas Road. That's not part of this, what?
That is under the existing Slurry Seal contract, 1702, which is currently under construction, being wrapped up. But they are
So that would be done approximately when?
I believe that's within the next couple of weeks.
Good, thank you.
Councilmember Middleton?
Tom, we're still planning to do an update of the PCI scores sometime in the fall, winters. Am I correct?
This next fiscal year, we've received a proposal from our consultant to perform the study, yes.
How many more contracts do you expect that we will be awarding for construction projects based on the current PCIs before we get new ones?
Possibly the 2019, depending on when we go out to bid with it. After that, we should have the new PCI adopted by the city.
Anything that we can do to move the, the new study along?
We will encourage them to act expeditiously.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holstage?
Thank you, I was going to ask those questions as well. So when was the PCI study done? It was 2014, or was it?
That's correct.
Is it reasonable to rely on that data? The roads sort of all kind of deteriorate?
It is reasonable to rely on that data in an aggregate sense, because the streets that have gotten worse, all of the streets have gotten worse.
Right.
So they may have dropped from the study. You may have a PCI of 58. It may actually be a 52, but then again, every other street is a 52, and the ones that were 52s are now 45s.
Right.
And I would just note, Councilmember Holstage, for a little background, those studies are about 60,000 each, so we try to do them about every five years, but we're going to try, we're doing it sooner this time.
And that's sort of the standard of practice?
Yeah, but, but again, but it's, it's like the census data. It's too old, it gets stale. So we, we can mitigate for that by, by basically, we drop down, or drop high, is it go higher on the score or lower on the score, and we just presume that there's, there's additional deterioration. So we, we would modify the scores administratively, basically to say this is probably a worse street. And then it's always helpful then if we can throw extra money at this resurfacing, then grab some of those extra streets.
Thank you, that makes a lot of sense to me. Is this the same contractor that we've used before and have been using?
The contractors have actually been going back and forth. When one gets beat out, they are very aggressive in getting the contract the next year. This is actually the contractor we had two years ago.
So, and I want to give props to Marcus, who is a saint in responding to a lot of constituent questions about their personal streets. And I saw a photo on the internet that reminded me of you because it was a city worker with a ruler going through and measuring the cracks. So I know it's a heated issue for a lot of our people in our community, who we all want beautiful, great streets that we're doing, so thank you for your work. So we did see a number of people complain about some of the Slurry Seal work, at least, that it was cracking, and that it was making some roads worse than they were before. And I asked Marcus to review that and just review the work of the contractor. So could you still work together to, to look at the quality of the work? Not a particular comment about this specific contractor, but just, those are, that's the feedback we're getting from the community. And then I just want to make a comment to my council members. And I think this makes sense, and I really support this project and our plan to appropriate Measure J funds going forward. I know that we still have a lot of roadwork to do, and this is a really important project. I just want to note that we have spent $22.5 million for a lot of our streets. That would build us a new library, which I know we really want. So I know at that time that this was important. But I want to make sure, as we're looking at a council, that we spend especially Measure J. I love seeing the Measure A, and the gas tax, and all of the other funds to do that. But I'd like to look at, we're going to bring forward the capital improvement plan for a lot of that Measure J money as well. Thank you.
And if I may
Councilmember Coors?
Yeah.
One of the benefits of doing the new PCI study is it's going to show the impact of the expenditure of all these funds on the streets. Our average PCI, I imagine, is going to go up dramatically.
That's a great point, thank you.
Councilmember Coors?
Thank you, Mayor. So two things, one, on the $5 million a year, that is the number, at least, we've been told so far, that if we spend, once we get all the roads up to a good condition, we will maintain them and not fall back $80 million again. So I would love to spend it on other things, but we dig ourselves in a hole that ends up costing us a lot of money to get out. So I just want to be conscious of the reason we're trying to spend that. So if we can just keep on bringing more revenue, please? Thank you, staff, and to everyone else who pays taxes, that would help. But that's the reason, because we got in such a bad hole, we're now spending so much on it. I just did want to follow up on your comment, Councilmember Holstage, on, you know, when we get complaints about the roads being bad, I think we tend to send them to Marcus, who, there has to be a better process than you then having to find out about every street. Is there a way we can have something on the website? And something, you know, street repair update? And then if you have a complaint, contact blank? I mean, because otherwise, and I don't know if other council members are sending it to
Marcus.
Tom, or David, or someone else? But, yes, but I, let's, can we make it easier than? Because we can't talk to each other when we get these things, and sometimes we're sending things to different people. So given the number of complaints lately we've been getting on this, both on, you know, the issues Mayor Portem raised, and the ones Councilmember Holstage raised, maybe we can have something on the website, and at least we can direct people somewhere where they can fill something out, and it may end up with Marcus, but at least we could stop it going to four other people at the same time?
Nothing will replace the Marcus caller complaint line, nothing.
Yes, but it might, it might stop some of the, some of the issues if we just made it easy for folks.
We can post the, the PCI study and the list of streets with the PCIs on the website, and give a blurb about where we are, where the projects have been, what has been done in the past. That's, that has been successful with the Slurry Seal projects.
That's a great idea.
One of the problems that we have is when we get the complaints, the people, the residents say, well, that can't be right, because the street down there that you're doing is in much better condition than mine.
And they show a picture of one piece of the street. I get it.
So we're always going to get those complaints, but the added information, we'll go ahead and post it on the website.
And also if people feel that a street that was, something was done to the street, and it's falling, it's not sticking, or there's a problem, who they should contact?
Even if I can, really quickly, because I think it's a great comment, because our assistant city manager is very accessible, but he's very skilled and has a lot of really important work to do, and not that responding to each individual street is not important work. But yeah, if there were, we just don't have a good avenue to direct people, and so even if there were a complaint, or not a complaint, like a comment form on the website, we have that through some of the traffic initiatives. We have a comment box, just like an inquiry box on the website, and then you could streamline the process, and then assign staff as needed.
Okay.
More than just the, I mean, if you post the information
They're still going to call us, yes.
Right, and Marcus is still going to get our emails.
We will initiate a comment box, or some way for them to get ahold of us.
So we do, we have an app for different maintenance requests. We have that. We have at your service app, add the streets.
Just one thing I'd like to comment on is, David, Measure J was what, six years ago now? Six years ago, when we formed the Measure J Commission, and I was fortunate enough to be on it, our roads were in horrible condition, and very little work had been done in years and years and years. And that's one of the first things we jumped into, and the council at that time took our recommendations to really put a lot of money into this. And there was a couple things we did, I think, which was important. One, the bulk purchases are better, because roads, Marcus explained to us, is when you have a bigger contract, you get more, more bang for your buck, because you, the cost per square foot is less when you buy a lot of square feet at once. And that's one reason, two councils ago, they actually took a bond out to get to Measure A, so they could have some extra money that year to do $8 million worth of paving, which got a lot of roads done that year. And also, the Measure J Commission paid for this first PCI study like five or six years ago, and, because there hadn't been one done in years, and this PCI study's been pretty good. And I think one reason for that is because when the PCI, when we received the PCI study, we had a group that was combined people from, from the staff, and also from Measure J Commission, and also from 1PS. And they all sat and reviewed that PCI report, and got input from the communities, et cetera. So I think we should make sure when we do another PCI report that we also do that type of, I think, Lisa, you were involved in that, too, remember? So it's really good to get the neighborhood input on that. Okay, any other comments? Motion approved by, made by Mayor Portem Roberts, seconded by Councilmember Coors. Motion is on the floor.
Motion passes, five to zero.
Next new item, item 5E, appoint a city council liaison for visitor center feasibility study. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. As you recall, it's been about a year, a little over a year ago, where we partnered with the tribe, the tribal council, to do this feasibility study at the visitor center.
with the tribe, the tribal council, to do this feasibility study at the visitor center. It was about each, our contribution was each about $13,000 each. That study is now done, and Councilmember Mills was the liaison prior, so we needed a new council member to be that liaison, to sit down and review that plan, the, just the initial conceptual ideas. And then it would obviously come back to the full council for just general discussion in any direction to move forward.
This is primary landscaping, right?
No, no, it's also, Mayor, actually, it's also the potential of expansion of the tourism center, the visitor center. The tribe would be part of that, because they have a, they would rent part of it, and then also potential for, with the private landowner there, expansion of whether it's retail parking or other possible kinds of shops.
See, I think this has your name written all over it. Okay. Everyone concur with that? Okay. All right, that's our last agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed further, I just wanted to offer the council the opportunity to reconvene in closed session, if that was the council's pleasure. You don't have the obligation to do that. You could certainly pick up where you left off next time, but you have that opportunity. I also wanted to note for the record, I failed to note for the record that Dr. Reddy recused himself during our discussion of the Lockwood litigation in closed session when we convened earlier this afternoon.
Okay, thank you. Next item, public comment, non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the posted agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
I have no speaker cards.
Going, going, gone? Okay. That's our final public comments for this evening. City council and city manager request an upcoming agenda development. Councilmember Coors?
Thank you. Just a few things. So one, we had the recommendations for the California Voting Rights Act meetings, which were on the list during the presentation, and that also, just so folks know, included moving our November council meetings from the 7th and 21st to the 14th and 28th. And the reason for the 7th was some people want to go to the National League of Cities, and if we do the 21st, it's the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and I don't know that everyone wants to be here till 11:00 at night that night, so we thought, keep them two weeks apart, was the idea, but we want to make sure everyone on council looked at that, knew about that, and was okay with the dates.
Can I ask a question on that?
Please.
Now, a lot of, a lot of these meetings are throughout the city, and those, those will not be posted city council meetings, so it'll just be the subcommittee.
Correct.
Okay, I just want a definitive answer from the city attorney. If those of us who are not on the subcommittee would like to go and sit in the back row and not say anything, can we go to those meetings and listen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I think that's the shortest answer I've ever gotten from anybody.
Thank you. And the only other date question I have is, despite best efforts to do the two reviews the council's responsible for, which is city manager and the city attorney, and trying to start today at 3:00, we have to set it on a separate day. So can that just get scheduled and then publicly noticed? We don't need to come up with a schedule now for it, but email out some possible dates. It might be easier for folks, unless people want to do it now and try and come up with something. No? Okay.
Because we have a deadline that we have to go into open session, it just rushes us.
Right, no, so that way we don't have a time certain, and it just makes it a lot easier. Yeah. So if that can get scheduled, please, with the council, that would be terrific. So that's it. Thank you.
Actually, I do, if I could, just for clarification, that the regular meeting on September the 20th, Thursday, and, because we're still having a meeting on the 19th?
No, that's, no.
That's Yom Kippur.
So we moved that one to the 20th.
The 20th, thank you.
And then the district will be the next week, because we don't have a meeting.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, ready to adjourn? Okay, the city council will adjourn to the next regular meeting Wednesday, July the 11th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, preceded by a closed session at the Palm Springs Convention Center. We are adjourned. 10:43. Thank you.